I praise.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, July 17th. We are all at the dais. Please join Councilmember Loretano in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh heavenly Father, as we close out our council meetings for this year until after the break in August, we ask that you give us guidance to finish off well and to continue guidance next year when we return. We ask that you watch those that work for the city that protect us here and abroad, and a special prayer for those families that lost members in the floods yesterday. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Loretano. All right, let's go to the communications. We have one communication item this evening, and it is an informational update by staff on the Insurance Services Office Rating Improvement for Building Safety. Director Development and Service Director Christopher Baker to present. Christopher, and I also understand that you have the Chief Building Official Randy Westcott with you.
Yes ma'am, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to give you this brief update. As you know, the insurance, the service office, the Insurance Service Office is a really important organization. It serves and rates organizations and jurisdictions all across the country, which Randy is going to allude to in just a couple of moments. One of the major purposes, as you also are all aware, is of the city, is to provide and protect public health, safety, and welfare. And that is really the driving force of the Building Safety Division. And the Building Safety Division has recently been through an audit from ISO, and we're pleased to present those findings to you tonight. Before I turn it over, Randy, just one other item. I'd like to say that although tonight we're specifically talking about a rating for Building Safety Division, it really takes our entire building, which includes our friends and colleagues in ECTEVs, engineering, the front counter, planning and zoning, the inspections groups, and so on and so forth. So we all really seamlessly work together in order to help the city move forward with these ratings audits. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy.
Thank you, Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Christopher indicated, the Insurance Services Organization is the organization that rates our communities. They've rated some 14,000 communities across the nation. They were formed in 1971 as a rating organization for the property and casualty industry. So every five years, they come around to our jurisdiction and other jurisdictions that have building codes that they're enforcing, and they provide a 22-page questionnaire, and they ask a lot of information from us about how we implement those codes and how we utilize those in plan review, inspections, and in keeping data and records. So the focus is predominantly on life safety and property loss as it relates to the built And the last time we were audited was back in 2012, and the ratings that they provide go from 1 to 10, with 1 being the best score and 10 being not so favorable. In 2012, when they provided our rating, we had a rating of 9 for both commercial and residential construction. And I'm pleased to announce that our most recent rating that was provided in March, we changed that rating for residential down to a 6, and for commercial construction, we've gone to a 4. Some of the things that relate to that is the code year that we have adopted. If we're less than five years from the date it was published, that is seen as a benefit, and it provides a multiplier as they calculate all their numbers. And so the more recent your code adoption is, the better it is for your community. Also, other things are the certifications your staff has, and the workload of staff for inspections and plan review, and the data records that you collect and the information that you can provide them as they're seeking information about our department. So that pretty much sums it up. It's very brief, but I am happy to say that we have improved from the 9 to a 6 in residential and the 9 to a 4 in commercial. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions, staff? Councilman Stip?
Randy, have you guys put together a, first of all, let me start with this. Congratulations. The movement from 9 to 4, you said, on commercial?
Yes.
And even to 6 on residential is pretty substantial. Do you have a, are you putting together a plan to move that farther down the scale? And when could we look forward to hearing about that?
Yes, so I have actually, they provide a detailed analysis for us. It's 40 some odd pages long. So I've been going through that, and there are some things that they have identified that we can certainly improve on. One of those would be providing more opportunities for education of, you know, current and changing industry practices, building code type stuff. And then another thing is providing a more standardized code adoption process. So we get, we get points for that. So we're actually working on that, and I hope, this is a spoiler alert, but I hope to bring the codes forward for adoption in January of 2019, the 2018 codes. So we'll be right up to date with the codes.
Great. And, you know, we're very, we've been very blessed with the reports that we get on how quickly plans are being reviewed, and, you know, the complaints are down, so to speak. And that, that's all very positive, and it may not necessarily be reflective of the rating. So it's a difficult job to do both. Keep the, keep the numbers low, but drive toward the rating. But I think as a community who believes very strongly in the building aspect of what we do, and it certainly drives the majority of the work that we, that we have, you know, keep at it. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd like to say agree with Bill. Bill, I loved your comments. Thank you very much. It is true, it's a slow process, especially if we haven't been focusing on it that much in the past. We have somewhat, but I think we have more staff and more ability now to, to be that. It's interesting, because when you first started, I thought, you know, everybody wants to be a 10, you know?[460.12][460.12](Laughter) So I was glad when you started talking to me, we're, we're talking about 1. That's where, that's what our goal is going to be. So thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now is the time for a citizen who would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda's item within the jurisdiction, of course, of the Goodyear City Council. And I do have one speaker card. And before I call that speaker out, I just want you to know that we can, when you're finished, respond to criticism. We can request that staff investigate and report on the matter, and we can request it to be on a future agenda. You have three minutes to speak. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. So before you begin, please identify your name and your address clearly before us. So I'm going to call Bonnie Janson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bonnie Janson.
Somebody help her, just bend it down.
Oh, no big deal.
You got it?
Right?
I'll let somebody help you with it.
Oh. That makes sense.[532.91][532.91](Laughter) Okay, perfect. Bonnie Janson, 1-8036, West Santa Irene Drive in Goodyear. And I write much better than I speak, so I may read this whole thing, if that's okay. It's to do with the elections, or any election in Goodyear. Simplicity is easy. Simplicity works, so does common sense. Some of my following three-minute rant consists of facts of which you should be aware. To begin, I have never been a really radical anything, but I sure do feel like I could head a Get Back to Basics campaign. It's easier for me to understand Spanish than it is some of our laws, and I don't speak Spanish. So one social benefit or agreement we have in the U.S. is voting rights. I would love to see Goodyear become a pioneering city by starting to use simple, everyday language in its charters and laws. As I am sure you are aware, Stephen King is a bestselling author. Not only does he write compelling books, he uses everyday language and definitely gets the point across to everyone. In light of our recent election, why was it made so difficult? Makes absolutely no sense. Where did we get $90,000 to just throw away on a runoff election that really wasn't needed? According to the West Valley View of 6/14/2017, since 2003, there have been three runoff elections, which wouldn't have been necessary if we didn't have over/under votes. West Valley View 6/21/17, the city's charter reads, "At the primary election, any candidate who shall receive a majority of all votes cast at such an election shall be declared elected to the office for which he is a candidate, and no further election shall be held as to said candidate." And then for anybody who doesn't know, to explain over/under, say five people are running for three seats in Goodyear, and you only vote for one. Your ballot counts as three votes cast, one for a candidate and two undervotes. Say those same five people are running for three seats in Goodyear, and you vote for all five. You have cast two overvotes. The West Valley View, June 28th, 2017, "We urge Goodyear residents to demand the city changes the way it calculates elections." That's why I'm here, to demand. We are the only town in Arizona that counts over/under votes.
Was that three minutes?
That's your three minutes. Thank you, Ms. Janson. So I gather what you're stating is that you'd like the staff to investigate on that and give you a report.
Yes, that would be great.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
We also have on work session August 21st, we'll be talking about the election that will be in 2019, but we'll be bringing back information before council for discussion in public.
Thank you. So would you be sure they get the notice? Thank you.
Wonderful.
August 21st.
I'll write it down when I get back there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please?
6.1, one, authorize the mayor or designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, acting by and through its Department of Transportation, to establish responsibility for funding, installation, operation, and maintenance of landscaping to be constructed with the I-10 slash State Route 303 Loop Traffic Interchange Phase II Landscaping Project. Two, authorize a budget transfer for $70,500 in general funds from Capital Project Reserve Project to I-10 slash State Route 303 Loop Phase II Landscaping Project. 6.2, adopt resolution number 17-1818 approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement Regarding Temporary Retention Basin, Water Campus Property and Well Site, the First Amendment, providing authorization for correction of Scrivener's errors, providing authorization and direction to take actions to finalize documents generally consistent with the terms of the First Amendment and the forms attached thereto, and to execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and the First Amendment, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, have a question on 6.1, please.
All right, just a question? That's right. We are, Councilman Campbell has a question on 6.1. Is that correct? Oh, I missed.
I have a question, too.
Oh, all right. So I'm going to start with.
On the same one?
No, the different ones, so.
6.1.
Please identify yourself and what one you're responding to.
Luke Calbert, City Traffic Engineer, and here to respond to item 6.1.
Okay.
My question is, this is just the money for the water meters to run the water, right? If this is not any of the artistic enhancements, that's separate? Is that correct?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, correct. The artistic enhancements were part of the previous IGA, and this is for the water meters and then the water to, for the landscaping.
Thank you very much. That's it.
All right, Council, I have to be yours with 6.2?
No, 6.1.
6.1.
Also same, traffic. I said a general question, essentially to do with the landscaping, but with the new I-10 303 intersection and us getting newer part of the freeway, is there any, has there been any upgrades or precautions put in for wrong, wrong-way drivers?
ADOT has been doing a broad, system-wide, wrong-way driver study over the last couple of years. And so any improvements that have been recommended from that study, I'm sure will be accommodated at this interchange, but it's been a system-wide project they've been working on because of some of the fatalities of the last five years or so.
Yeah. I was just curious, since we're, it's a newer part of the freeway, if we might get the newest type of prevention. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's go forthin'. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
7-0.
We're going to go to the business item. Again, remind council refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete, and there's a motion on the table. So item 7.6 has been moved to the third item on business and agenda today, tonight. So we're going to start with 7.1. The first item, then, is a public hearing to consider the approval of a special use permit for an RV and self-storage facility at PV 303. Open public hearing, Planer 2, Alex Latensky will present. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a request for a special use permit for Dollar Self Storage. The property is located within the PV 303 PAD. It is zoned I-1 under that PAD overlay. Special storage, excuse me, self-storage facilities are allowed within the industrial district with the approval of a special use permit. The property is located at the northwest corner of Indian School and 169th Avenue, so just west of the 303, just south of Sub-Zero and little east of Cotton Lane. The property is located within the Air Force Base's Accident Potential Zone, or APZ-2. Luke Air Force Base was notified and given the opportunity to provide feedback, which they did, and through a mutual agreement, they have determined that the facility will not negatively impact operations at Luke and deem the use compatible. This is a look at the site plan that's proposed. If the special use permit is approved, the applicant will submit for a formal site plan review, which is administrative. So you can see there are two access points into the site. One is off Indian School Road and one off 169th Drive. The gray areas on the site plan are the enclosed self-storage units, and the RV storage spaces are designated as parking spaces on the site plan. And then you can see the office building at the front. These are some of the proposed elevations, which will also be formally submitted for site plan and design review pending special use permit approval. The project is 5.6 acres, and the proposed design is complementary to the adjacent industrial buildings within the PV 303 development. The use is compatible to surrounding zoning and the general plan. The facility includes 116,000 square feet of indoor storage spaces for individual units and 75 RV spaces. There are a few development standards that have been proposed to deviate from current city standards. The deviations were, the deviation requests were to reduce some of the setbacks. The need for setbacks are usually attributed to first building safety and then to usability and aesthetic value. The applicant has provided reasonable explanation for the need of the deviations, and the site still meets the intent of the regulations that the city implies. A neighborhood meeting was not required for this project since there are no residents within 500 feet of the site. However, proper notification was sent to adjacent property owners within 500 feet. Therefore, since the applicant has demonstrated the need for, need in, for the use and conformance with the required city standards and provided justification for the proposed deviations, staff does recommend approval of the project subject to stipulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval as well at their meeting last week. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, available for questions, and I can answer any as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve a special use permit to allow a self-storage facility at the northwest corner of Indian School Road and 169th Drive in the PV 303 development, subject to stipulations? Right here, motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Osborn. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Can we go back to the site plan, please? That one. The gray outline, is that covered? I mean, what is that? Because you said 75 RV parking places, so I'm assuming that's contained within the center?
Correct. The, these outlines are the RV storage spaces. The grayed out buildings are indoor facilities.
So the A, B, C, D, E is all a bit, structure? I'm not going to call it a building, but it's structure?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I got.
Councilman Hammond?
I have a quick question, too. The, I don't know if you can control this or not, but I'm just curious, is there an exit? I just see the two exits here, and I know the, all those RVs and people are trying to pull them and get onto the freeway and make a left turn on the freeway. Is there like a right-only type designation, or, I don't want to put a light there, but I'm just curious. I just foresee a lot of trailers trying to get out in the summertime to head up north, and just curious if there's a right turn, or?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant to come up here to address that, if I could.
The applicant?
Oh.
I did, too.[1353.16][1353.16](Laughter)
Whoa. I was asleep at the switch there. For your record, my name is Stephen Earl, and my address is 3101 North Central, and I'm here in behalf of Dollar Self Storage. The, the exit entrance that's off the cul-de-sac, that is actually for the RVs and for anything pulling a trailer, because the balance of the site, because of the median in Indian School Road, is right in, right out. So we created the secondary entrance for all the RVs to be able to come out at a cul-de-sac and make a normal left-hand turn.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Osborn?
Will you please let your business know that we thank them for wanting to come into Goodyear?
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody on this side? Councilman Campbell?
Well, we certainly need something like this, because friends of ours who do not live where I live store their RVs in Peoria and in Glendale, and they would very much like to have a closer facility. And I've heard a lot of folks say that they like having their storage units in an air-conditioned building. So I think this will be very successful at this location.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Campbell. I will mention the building app is all air, air-conditioned space. It's two levels. That's why you see the loading docks going right up to the building door for that purpose.
Councilman Loretano?
Yeah, I want to second that. Thank you. We actually have several small businesses in our area that are small business people that do want air conditioning, and they've had to keep their stuff, same thing, over, I think it's as far as Peoria, you know? Almost like Pleasant to get someplace, and they're business owners, so that takes money out of their pocket to go drive over there. So thank you for bringing one to Goodyear.
So you saw the need?
Even my business requires self-storage. We do, whose file, are, all of our files off-site now, and having the Maricool means they don't get dirty and dusty, so we use a facility just like this.
Well, that's wonderful information, and we are, want to welcome you on this building. We are pleased with it, and it's at the right spot. And it looks really good on, on the screen, so we're looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to vote on this. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to 7.2 on business, to consider appointing Walt Steiner to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Planning Manager Katie Wilkin will present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We recently had an unexpected vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so we advertised the position, and then the City Council Subcommittee for Board Appointments met, reviewed applications, interviewed applicants, and I'm honored to bring forth their recommendation for you tonight, which is to appoint Walt Steiner to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Walt is a resident of the Australia neighborhood, and he is a graduate of the LEED program. He is a, attended Western Military Academy and Western Illinois University, and is a retired from retail management. So we recommend that the planning, that you appoint Walt Steiner to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term that will expire February 9th, 2018. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Walt is also here tonight, if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any speaker cards? Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then can I have a motion, a second, to appoint Walter Steiner to fulfill a term expiring February 9th, 2018, or until his successor is appointed and qualified? Right here, motion?
So moved.
Okay, I heard a motion for Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. I'm going to start down here this time. Know what he?
Yeah.
It's always a pleasure to get to meet our citizens, and, you know, it's always amazing how many step up and want to help be a part of our growing city, and I, and I thank them all that, that applied, and looking forward to Walt being on P&amp;Z.
Listen, Councilman Loretano?
I want to say the same thing. We had so many qualified, wonderful people that applied from our city and to step up and, and want to be involved. I was so impressed and, and welcome Walt.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I just think our city is stronger and stronger through our volunteers and everybody that participates in the political process. So thank you, Walt, for stepping up and being part of the, part of the zoning committee. Thank you.
On this side? Councilman Stip?
Can't see you, Walt. We got the post, but Walt's been a regular attendee for two years now, almost. Yeah. So we've, I think we've gotten an opportunity to meet Walt in, you know, kind of an informal basis over time. I'm excited, when, when I saw your name, I was very excited, and I think you'll be a great addition. So thank you for volunteering to do that, and look forward to the recommendations coming out of P&amp;Z. Thanks.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Not much more to say, except welcome aboard, Walt.
Councilman Campbell?
I agree with everything everybody said, but Walt, thank you so much for stepping up and wanting to be a part on this commission. You're going to bring a vital voice to that commission, and that is one who has been in the retail business for many, many, many years, and understands our growth and understands our city's master plan. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Well, you did it the right way. You volunteered on many committees. You showed up at so many council meetings. You showed up at social events. You showed up at my office a couple times, and you, you know, you asked the right questions. You found out information. It's so nice, because I can always depend on you, that you're not going to say anything out in public if you don't have the right information. You're not going to put it online if it's not the right information, and I, and I greatly appreciate that. So council, let's vote on this, and then we'll have Darcy give him the oath of loyalty. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Darcy, you're on, and so if you'll come forward to be sworn in?
Yeah, so.
He's going to do it. They'll get her up there.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Walt Steiner.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona?
The state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And defend them against all?
And defend them against all.
Enemies, foreign and domestic?
Enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Will faithfully and impartially. Will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner
Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm
So I do affirm.
All right, everybody, you can't sit down yet. Picture time.
Hey, Walt, 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 we take picture.
This is traditional.
It's tradition. You're younger than from
Fiddler on the road.
Me and La Macha.
Fiddler on the road.
Tradition, huh?
Fiddler on the road.
Yeah.
All right, round 7.6. The item in business is consider adopting the Community Health Park Conceptual Master Plan. Parks and Recreation Director Nathan Taurus will present. Nathan?
Mayor and council, we are very excited to present the conceptual master plan for the highly anticipated health park for your consideration this evening. Before we get started, I would like to recognize members of the Parks and Recreation Commission that are here this evening. If I can have them stand up. We have Kim Harris with us, John Richardson, and also Jerry Wilson is present. Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission voted this past Wednesday unanimously to advance the conceptual plan to City Council this evening for your adoption consideration. Now, before we get started, I'd like you to take a minute to think about, really consider how special this moment is. Because we are not only on the cutting edge of innovation, but we are truly making history. To take a question that was posed by an early visionary for this project, Mr. John Kuhn, he asked, what happens if you take healthcare professionals, members of the public, and park planning professionals, and you put them in a room, and you work on a park design? What magic occurs? And we're going to find out what that magic is this evening. You see, the result is a project that is truly unique and innovative, world-class. It will truly not only define Goodyear, but also the region. It's iconic, it's innovative, unique, and it's life-changing. I want you to think about that for a moment. This project is definitely life-changing. So tonight, we'll discuss project background, including the partnership development. We'll talk a little bit about the purpose. We'll get into Logan Simpson presenting the actual conceptual master plan. We'll talk about next steps, and then, of course, questions, and we'll also have time for stakeholders and commission members to speak as well. And with that, we'll have Pam discuss the project background.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. A little shorter than Nathan. So the project background, we've been in front of you a few different times for a few different reasons as it relates to the health park over a few years now. As Nathan mentioned, back in 2014, John Kuhn approached initially Stan Holm over at Abraza West Campus Hospital, who then quickly brought the city into the conversation about creating an innovative place, a destination for health and wellness in the West Valley, and specifically in Goodyear. That location, as you know, is directly north of Interstate 10 between Dicer and Bullard Roads. So that same year, council also adopted its first Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan. Within that plan, it calls for the retention basins in question to be considered as a future location for a park, and also as a key trail connector for the West Valley. So discussion proceeded quickly after that. Cancer Treatment Centers for America, Abraza West Campus, Adelante Healthcare, Maricopa County, and the city got, put their heads together to start imagining a vision for this park, and how it might go from being sort of minimally maintained flood retention land into a future destination. Thanks to some outstanding collaboration and partnership, in May of 2016, the city of Goodyear purchased the nearly 130 acres for a whopping total of $233. Just a true accomplishment that was a real testament to the vision of this park, as well as the leadership at the county and city. Following the purchase of the land, the partnership with the, the partners will be introduced shortly, but work has gone pretty quickly. The City Council approved a budget allocation for this conceptual master plan before you. And so in September, the city issued its RFQ, and Logan Simpson was awarded the contract. Just one month later, the park had sort of its first big national recognition when the partnership won the GE Healthy Cities Leadership Challenge. It was a national competition for innovative public-private partnerships that were seeking to improve population health in non-traditional ways. We were one of nine across the country out of hundreds of applicants, and the city received $25,000 and over a year of technical support. So we've had the pleasure of speaking with public health and leadership experts from around the country who have given input and invested their time into seeing our partnership become successful. In November of 2016, just a few months ago, we presented an update to you regarding the status of the partnership and formalizing its governance. During that update, we presented the draft charter to City Council, when later, that same winter in December, the park partnership formally established its charter and board of directors. And then since November, we have embarked on this master planning process. That has been the primary focus of the health park partnership, and we are just so thrilled to be here today to recommend this master plan for adoption. Within this first year, as you can imagine, there's been a lot of activities, and just to position this project in the context of the city of Goodyear and why it's important to City Council, is that this project really uniquely cuts across all four of the City Council's strategic focus areas. It speaks to goals in fiscal and resource management about creating innovative regional partnerships to fund public good without always having to use public money. It cuts across economic vitality by taking a central location in a major economic development corridor and turning it into an amenity that will attract businesses and residents alike. It cuts across sense of community by providing a platform for programs that will bring people in our community together. And finally, it touches quality of life by creating tangible infrastructure that will help improve the health of our community and make this a healthier place to live. And there's no doubt that this project ahead of us is very long-term, but in this first year, we had presented last November some objectives to you, and we're pleased to say that we are well on our way, if not complete, with all of them. So we've established our charter and formed our partnership that was signed last December. We've been working on a baseline health assessment of the community so that it's a data-driven project from day one. So we're aware where our needs are, and that we can measure the impact of the park moving forward. And we're hoping by this fall to have printed documents and collateral that we can share to start building the health case for this project. The master plan is here in front of you today. And then finally, the partnership is currently working on establishing its own standalone nonprofit so that this project, the programming and so on, will live in the hands of the community and not simply as a city project. And then finally, on the project buzz, we just really wanted to share the excitement and the passion that we've received from the health community, from our local community along the way. Certainly in the master plan process, we'll discuss, but also, we've been approached by numerous organizations to come and be featured speakers on the vision of this project. We've attended public health events in the region where unbeknownst to us, other leaders in the community have touted this project as a glowing example of what can happen when the community and government and the private sector all come to work together. And, you know, we'll just be thrilled to continue to share with you along the way the momentum that we have. But tonight, the feature is the master plan, so we'll turn it over to Brian.
They usually don't let me up here. So tonight, I just have one slide, and that is, is really just talk about the partnership very briefly. As Pam pointed out, this has been before council in terms of us establishing the charter when we came to you in November. But what the charter does, it really sets a foundation for a public-private partnership, very critical that we did this, and we did it with, so I shared in November with council, a lot of different inputs from around the country, and including Arizona State University that helped us get that established. Charter also establishes governance. So governance, you'll see up here, and I'll go through the members in just a moment. But I want to talk about really what the purpose, the charter set forth is our vision and our mission. And these are words worth reading, because we really gave it a lot of thought as far as, okay, what's the vision? And it reads as follows. "The health park will be a nationally recognized park that deploys innovative wellness amenities to favorably affect health behaviors and enhance critical care and healing, and promotes a culture of wellness consistent with Goodyear's vision to be a city that supports healthy lifestyles and the environment in the West Valley." That's the vision. The mission, it's simple. Health, the health park exists to make well-being a way of life. Make well-being a way of life. And that touches all aspects of the population. So the members, what we set up in the charter establishes right now, we have five voting executive board members. You'll see them up here on the screen. And the purpose of the voting members, they're really tied to the land or the programming use, in other words, are proximate to the basins and have an opportunity to interact with those. So we have Stan Holm, the CEO of Abraza West. And by the way, and this is, he doesn't even know I'm going to do this, it's a shameless plug, Stan. In USA Today, there was an article that came out, Trauma Centers Get Mixed Grades, and of those, level-one trauma centers in the country, only 34 received an A rating. 34. Of those, three are in the western United States. Of those, one is in Arizona, and it's our, on Abraza West Campus. So congratulations. And by the way, in the USA Today article, it shows Goodyear listed in there, city right in Arizona, and also has us listed in the table as well. So we're getting some exposure, which is awesome and well-deserved. So Stan, we also have Avine Tafoya, she's the CEO of Adelante Healthcare. She is not here, and I don't think I can say why yet. I can't. She is receiving a big award down in Tucson. She was planning on being here and sharing her passion for this project as well. But, so they will have a center that they're building right next to Abraza West Campus that will touch the basins. Alan Swain, he's the vice president for CTC. And then we have Goodyear Executive Management. So in the charter, the city manager or his or her designee will be on the executive board as well. And then finally, a Parks and Rec Commissioner, in our case, it's Brian Murphy, the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, that is on the executive board as well. And that position is appointed, commission members are appointed by the council for Parks and Rec Board. And finally, we have the advisory board, knowing that there are other groups or individuals that can come forward and help us with the, a lot of technical support that may not be located next to the basins, but they would absolutely be able to help us. We have three members that are established right now. John Kuhn, and it's been recognized, he's a visionary behind this, and he is the owner of Wellness Place Concepts. Peter Edgitt, CrossFit Fury owner, and he is actually on a sojourn in New Mexico tonight, but his wife is here, and she'll be talking a little bit later. And then Deb Robinson, who's Arizona Department of Health Services Chief of Community Innovations. So that is our partnership individuals at this point. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Well, let's get a round of applause for those people.
So Mayor and council, the purpose of tonight is to consider adoption of the conceptual master plan. But how is a conceptual plan different than an actual full-fledged master plan? Well, there's a couple of major differences. They differ in cost, and they differ in, one is more exact and one is visionary. So, to give you an idea, for a similar-sized project, basin project in Gilbert, the city of Gilbert spent about a million dollars on their full-fledged master plan. Our conceptual plan is in the $80,000 range. And so the project, the plan itself is to serve as a highly visionary document. What does that mean? That means that it's intended to serve as visionary purposes only. It may not get exact in terms of exact amenities that will go in, but what it's designed to do is basically reflect what types of amenities could actually exist within the park. And so we're quite proud of that. This visionary document is step one for the stakeholder group in terms of getting a vision, visionary document completed, so then they can advance the stages for funding and continue on the planning process. So this is merely step one in the process for that. So we've had quite an extensive engagement process. Over 130 residents participated in two community meetings, and I'd like to thank Mayor and council that did participate in those meetings with us and experienced the energy in the room with the public. It was fantastic. I think to take word right from our consultants after the first public meeting was wow. Goodyear residents did show up, they're excited about this project, and they definitely shared their input. We also had a series of stakeholder workshops. Those were attended by 40 people each workshop, and when we say stakeholders, that's city staffers from various city departments, that's the partners that Brian mentioned earlier, as well as their staffs, their doctors, their practitioners as well. All in all, 22 hours of planning went into this conceptual master plan. And then, of course, lastly, as previously mentioned, this past Wednesday, the Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously voted in favor of advancing this plan for council consideration this evening. And with that, now the fun stuff. So we solicited different firms through an RFQ process, and we had great, great interest. There were many, many firms, and the firm that was selected was Logan Simpson. We're very, very pleased with Logan Simpson and their partners. You'll hear from them now, but I'd like to introduce Craig Coronado with Logan Simpson to talk about the plan.
Welcome, Craig.
Madam Mayor, council members, first of all, I'd like to thank you for inviting us to participate in this project. As Nathan mentioned, the energy and the excitement around the project has been incredible. It's been unique, and we think that you're going to end up with a unique project, park, that results from a sort of undervalued asset for the city. So I'm going to give you a general introduction of the planning process here, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Charles Anderson, of work that, who will take you through the story of the plan, which I think you'll find very exciting and entertaining. So, so the guiding principles that we were working with, which were established early, and again, I'd like to recognize the stakeholders, because we had, as Nathan mentioned, 40 stakeholders that showed up and gave us energy and really let us know what this park should be, and they're from your community, they're going to be the stewards of this project moving forward. And so we're thrilled to be able to give some form to the vision that is really theirs and yours. But the guiding principles were, first of all, getting with the community, getting with the stakeholders, understanding the needs the stakeholders, understanding the needs of this park. Its focus on health and wellness is something that, in our business of park planning and design, has been talked about for years, and there haven't been too many places that have really followed through on that. It's well documented that being outdoors benefits people's health, and having access to outdoors and fitness and activity is going to be key to this project. And so, we see the health of the natural asset that you have here contributing to the health and wellness of the people that live here and visit here. It's also a recreational asset for the entire community, so there are elements that you'll see in it that anybody can partake of, any age, any ability, any interest. It's designed to be welcoming to all people and all cultures. This concept of big nature, and I give credit to my colleague, Charles, for developing this idea, and he'll talk about it more, but it's something that galvanized the idea around the park. And the fact, the underlying fact that it needs to be sustainable, not only in terms of environmental, but also social and economic aspects, and the group, the public-private partnership will be charged with carrying that sustainability and stewardship through. So, what we heard from the stakeholder group is it's got to be a different kind of park. It's not your traditional ball fields and soccer fields and playgrounds. It will have some of those elements, but it really focuses on therapy and wellness and physical, spiritual, and mental types of health of people. So a focus on healthy, a focus on coming up with a big vision, that it be a world-class park, that it be something that no place else in the valley has done, or in the region for that matter, perhaps not even the country. Again, that it's sustainable, and it's sustainable based on partnerships of not just the city, but partners that are very interested in the welfare of the city and its people. So, different in the fact that it celebrates nature, our nature, this nature, Goodyear's nature, that it builds community, that it provides places for people to go and raise families and grow their families and meet and gather and embrace the community. It's iconic in the sense of, like Millennium Park here, it's got some great design aspects that people will come back and back to see. It's focused on therapy, that wellness is at the core of everything that's there. This is a community garden that's designed by Daniel Winterbottom, who is one of our colleagues that worked together on the project with us. And that it's also whimsical, it's fun, it engages art and culture, it's a great place to be. So what we see when we go out to the site now, and I'm sure most of you drive by it every day, and it's like, you know, it's, this is the, this is the front door, the welcome mat to Goodyear, but it's just an open space right now. And if you look out there today, there's quite a bit of water in there, it's serving its purpose as a flood control basin, but it's highly visible. It is indeed, and can be, the front door to Goodyear. It extends from Bullard to Dyser, with Litchfield going right down the middle. It's a gateway into the city, and it will be for the future. However, it serves multiple functions. It serves for flood control, that was its first purpose, and that's, you'll see that woven into the plan. It's an important component of how the plant, the plant is designed. It's also a heavily impacted landscape, which is actually a benefit to us in design. We have kind of a blank slate to work with. It's a big hole in the ground now, it needs a lot of contouring and grading and so on, but it's already been impacted. It's not, we don't have to treat it with kid gloves, we can make some big, bold moves. And so, it has challenges, it has potentials that we're really, really excited about. So that's what you see now. Charles will describe what you'll see in the future. So, how we got started, as we would with any project, we really want to understand the context, not only what the people want, but what is the site going to allow us to do with it? What are the surrounding land uses? How do you get to it? What is the climate like there? What parts of the site are, really need to be dedicated for flood control, and which ones can be used for other purposes? So we looked at the grades, the hydrology, we had a survey done, we looked at access, visibility, who owns the land around it, how do you get to it? And we found a lot of challenges there, that, within the context, it's a changing area, there's limits to access, and they would have to be overcome in future phases of design. This is a plan of the site, it's 127 acres, a big, big site. And when we start applying the pieces to it, you really realize how big it is. But there are some drivers here that really started to indicate what we should be doing. One is this linear, it's a linear condition, it runs along the I-10. It has a hydrology function, water runs from west to east toward the Agua Fria River. And so, there's also plans in the works at the larger scale, county-wide, to put a regional trail through here. So the idea of the hydrology moving that way and the potential trail connections seem to jive as a sort of central organizing feature for the project. And then we look at the challenges of access, the idea that Litchfield could be a gateway, and you have to get from one side of the park to the other, so why not make that connection also, some sort of iconic gateway that's recognizable for Goodyear? And we looked at the access points and the challenges associated with that. The land uses around there, mixed-use retail, a lot of parking there now, to the, but the backs of these developments really back on the park. So how do you sort of turn those around so that they embrace the edges of the park? And Charles will talk a little bit about how we're addressing that. There's undeveloped land along there, there's the medical innovation corridor along Bullard that could play into this plan. So a lot of what's happening around the park will influence the design of the park. So, the master plan is one that will expand community health in very different ways. It creates a vision, a high-level conceptual vision that will seed future development, those next steps, creating that buzz that Nathan talked about. It's a regional destination, and it really should be and could be the heart of this growing city. It started with the people, this was the group that we worked with over a strong four-month period, really exciting to work with the group. We looked at, you know, what that context could be in the future. This shows, you know, that that's, all that vacant land out there is not always going to be vacant, so how might it fill in, and how might that development affect our park? And then the purpose of the conceptual master plan is really to get people talking, to get the buzz going, to get the ideas, to illustrate very, at a very high level, what we heard from the stakeholder group. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Charles Anderson of Work to take you through the plan.
Thank you. Welcome, Charles.
Yeah, it's great to be back here, Mayor and Council, and everybody else. I'm underdressed, as I usually am, I'm sorry about that, but I'm eager to talk about the park. And one of the things I want to start with is where the name Wellspring Park came from, because there probably are some questions about why that name, and what's the significance of it. But we didn't get there until we got through the design of the project. We didn't get that till the end of the fourth major meeting on final possession, presentation, where that became kind of obvious that that could be the name for the park. And I just want to explain Wellspring to you, it's, the definition is the original and bountiful supply of something. Doesn't have to be water, it could be money, that would be great. It could be trees, it can be kindness, it can be imagination, it can be all those things that come to this park. I also, at the time, I Googled Wellspring, and there's a lot of Wellsprings around the country, and a lot of them are dedicated to good things. You don't use Wellspring unless you intend good things, so our park intends good things. And I also found WellspringPark.com available, and I was like, whoa, how could that happen? So, I'd like to look for things to connect up, to make things interesting in the process of designing things, see if I can move forward. I'm going the right way, yes. Okay, as we've talked about already, the park is kind of split into two pieces by the road, but we're working very hard to connect those two. And so you have to imagine that this park is a continuous tissue that has to go over a little thing to get to the other side, but they're designed altogether. And one of the unifying parts of the park is definitely the way the water moves through, water moves through the site. You can see there's water, a lot of water on the west end. Oh, what happened? I went backwards, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Oh, that's so fun. He said it would be entertaining, right? Yeah, and stupid is the other word. Okay, so before I get into the park, I want you guys to go on a little trip with me on how we got there as a design team. When you come to new places and different places everywhere, you bring and learn things, and then you create things. This is a park that our design team did in New York City. It's the Planetarium at the American Museum of Natural History, and it's a one-acre roof garden park, but it's an intensively-designed park, and it's, it has water, which is always an important part of a park, and it has a Planetarium, so it's a stunning place. Now you can jump across the continent, and you get up in Anchorage, and there we're working on a project that's called the Anchorage Museum of History and Art Common. And it's, the Anchorage Common is a short for it. Basically, it's a whole lot of native birch trees that we conjured up from around the area, 285 of them, and we surrounded a green space in the middle. And what happens in that green space is kind of magical. This is an Anchorage discotheque outside. Can imagine, the sun doesn't come up, but how fun it might be to dance around under the lights when it's as dark as it can possibly be anywhere on the planet. Another project that we worked on, the design team, is the Sculpture Garden, the Olympic Sculpture Park up in Seattle. You can see this base needle, so you can kind of tell where it is. And it has incredible geometry, it's all about native plants, that big nature concept starts to work its way into our project. And what's really exciting on any of these projects is when something like this happens, this is the first place along Seattle's waterfront where people can touch saltwater. Get down there, and it's the other way around, the seals pop up on the beach there for the first time along the waterfront as well. They bring their babies and stuff, it's very, very cool. And they get snow there, so you don't be too jealous, it's cold up there in Seattle. Another project that we're working on currently is a 500-acre park in Athens, Greece, and it's at their old airport, the Athens Airport, and it's also the site for the Olympics, and I think it's 20, couldn't be 2014, could it? 2004, yeah. Beijing was 2008. The park is taking advantage of a lot of the resources there, and a lot of concrete, and how do you deal with that and create a Greek park there? For example, this is part of the runway, it becomes a promenade in the park, and all the native plants that grow there, including the olive tree that you see here, but the olive tree isn't native to Greece, it's native to Italy. About 2,000 years ago, somebody brought it over there and liked olives, and it's been there ever since. So, plants move with us and do incredible things along the way. And then we're back to Goodyear, one of the most beautiful, beautiful deserts on the planet, is definitely the Sonoran. And sometimes it's tough, but it's really iconic and beautiful. Water, as you can tell from last night, a side story, I sat out, because we finally got a nice monsoon up in North Scottsdale, a good one, it was just horrible. And I sat out with my dog right on the edge and watched this incredible rainstorm flying around me. My dog would stay with me, although she was a Labrador and worried, but my family was not coming outside. And all of a sudden, I heard the biggest, loudest bang imaginable. That lightning must have been 200 feet away from me. And they came running outside, "Are you okay?", you know? But that's the excitement of living in Arizona, being by the lightning and all the things that are here. The scary things can be in lightning. I didn't see well for a while, I can remember that. So, the park is going to be about iconic structures. We talked about how to make the park visible from distance, we're thinking right now that it could be architecture, vertical architecture. We know shade is really, really important, trees do a reasonably-good job, but other things do better jobs quicker, so you really need to combine those things. And really important is for people to find their place in the park, all different kinds of places that people can create their own event, so it's not always staged. Farmers' markets and bazaars, people can make things in Goodyear and sell them at the park. Amphitheaters that are for events, but they're also exercise places and meditation places. And our gorgeous Mesquite trees, they're incredible trees, they burn, they make great fire, but there are gorgeous trees on the ground, and we have them colonizing our site right now. And then there's the other things that we imagine in the park, like zip lines and giraffes. We want to have, not giraffes, okay, but the zip, the zip lines definitely, javelinas, We want to have places for kids to go that are unlike anything they've ever seen before, places where they can actually get muddy and wet and dirty and throw things at each other, and that's okay. And use their imagination to create their environment. And we want water that isn't, doesn't smell like chlorine, which is really a deadly, deadly chemical, especially a lot of it, but even a little of it is not good for things, that's why plants don't grow in it. But we can make a natural water place here, we can do that through the technology that's out there now, and I'll explain that in a minute. And another thing about the park that should be important, and is really important in Arizona, is about observation. You can observe from this park other places, and you can watch the stars. In this particular idea, we're talking about a place called Skyfields. We have room for places like that, where people can look at the stars. And little places, and places for everybody to come to, there's room for all these things in the park. Let's scale this thing, these are all scaled places. Central Park, of course, is enormous, it's many, many parks. You can see the Anchorage, or the Metropolitan Park in Athens is a large park. And then you see Hans Park, which is a signature park in Arizona and is under development. You can see how much land we have with Goodyear Community Park, or aka Wellspring Park. Friendship Park and the International Peace Garden, so you can see the scale that this park has, it's a very large place. Now, big nature is something that I want to just hit on just for a second, and what we have here is really unique, and we have the ability to do the upland, dryland landscape, but we also can carry that right on through to the Iron Mesquite, Sycamore, and Cottonwood because of the water that comes to the site. And I'll answer any questions about water at any point, if you want to interject and say, "Tell me about water." But I will tell you, we have a nice report, it's in your master plan, a water resources report, and it's pretty comprehensive at, for this stage of a project, I can just say there's no worries, we're going to have water. And I'll explain that more in a bit. We brought together three conceptual designs, one was called Nature Nurture. It's funny to come up with names for things, mind and body and human nature, and we put them together, and that's how we ended. We took the best of those things, and then we created the master plan that we're showing you here today. The context is one of the most unique things about this park, but it's not the first park to do this. But adding of architecture to the park does something really amazing for this place. It puts eyes on the park, it edges the park nicely, it takes away the shape of the park that's defined by property lines and creates a more moving shape, so the park can be more inviting. And eyes and people on the park, it's always critical for a successful park. So the conceptual plan, you can see here, it's just so big, you know, that it's really hard to show on one slide, so we have to break it down into pieces for you, because this is really a series of seven parks, and I'll explain that by, the west side has three precincts, engagement, engagement spectacle, challenge, discovery, water play, and fitness. And the east side has meditation, observation, it should be observation, observance is good, therapeutic, healing, challenge, adventure, and water play. The first part, on the west side, we have a precinct day, which is about engagement, it has a conference center. And what I'll do for you guys is, I'll start with this slide showing one side of the park, and then I'm going to go into each of the precincts, and then I'm going to show physically with cross-section what they look like. So the engagement spectacle part, the lower right-hand slide shows Suaro's, and anybody golf around here?
Used to.
Used to? I never, I'm allergic to grass, so that was never that great to me. I took my dad when he was older and had fun, but it is really beautiful to see grass up in the desert, like in Target golf courses. So imagine for a moment that we're going to carry that kind of theme through the park. We're going to have big nature, natural systems, and we're going to have places meant for us to do the things we need to do that can't happen on the desert. We'll have iconic architecture, this is, if you've ever been to Rochelle, it's a beautiful, beautiful place, and we want to have a beautiful place here as well for our architecture. On the corner, you can see the building, and you see a cross-section that, I can't do an arrow, can I? Oh, oh, there we go. Okay, you see it, if I can keep it still, it moves fast. If I can keep it still, it moves fast. There's a cross-section right there that's in red, and you'll see this is what we call Sky Islands, and these are buildings that carry gardens up into the air on the buildings. And that carries the idea of the park up into the sky. And this could be a conference center. This could be a residential, or it could be a hotel, in a combination of things like that. The next area, I'm going to show you just a little bit more of that one. I've got ahead of myself. So you can see those structures that are in orange. I used to call them rufus, but they're roofs. And they're really solar shade structures. That's a tongue twister. They can probably hydraulically move with the sunshine and produce energy. So you can, if your phone's dead, you can plug it into the rufus and things will get fired up again, and it can be used in the park as a form of energy. The challenge and discovery area, this is a place where you find climbing walls, gardens, places to grow food, and pickleball. Everybody likes pickleball. So we're going to have about 200 pickleball courts in the park. A blow-up of that area, you can see the cross-section that starts with B, and that's the oasis, Reparian Corridor. You can see next to the highway, there's sort of like the White Tank Mountain landscape desert. And then you'll come to a wall, and the water will spill down into an oasis. And that oasis will be water that you can touch. It's safe. And a climbing wall next to it. And then, as you cross over to what I call Wellspring Water Course. There's a water course that goes from one side of the park all the way to the other. And it transforms along the way because of the amount of water that's added to it. If you go out there today, you'll notice that one side is really, really wet and the other side doesn't have a lot of water. That is a condition that's naturally happening. We'll enhance that and make it even more exciting and dramatic as it goes through the park. On the next one, we have the water play fitness area. This is the place where kids can get wet. Anybody can, parents, whoever wants to. But it's not swimming. It's about splashing. It's about water as excitement, as animated, and not a stream necessarily, but a contrived kind of space. It's also a place where stormwater is very, very exciting. They call it the water spectacle. And if you can imagine, see if the very, see if I can use this thing. Okay, see right there? You see the water from off-site comes barreling into the park from that side. You can imagine if you're on this thing, when the water is coming rushing in there, you could observe that as a spectacle, like this, and a cow or a cat or whatever is floating down the water with it, garbage can, Volkswagen, golf cart. You can go down the list as it comes into the park. This could be a place to watch that happen and appreciate it, and hopefully lightning too. What else? I was just going to say, you can see again, the architecture on the side is mostly residential. It anchors the edge of the mall, the park against the mall, and they can play off one another. And we have to connect the two pieces. So what we thought we would do is put a multi-modal overpass. It sounds expensive. It's pretty, it's not too bad, apparently. But it's two paths that take you over. One is for bicycles, the other one's for pedestrians, and also golf carts and maintenance vehicles that cross over the bridge. But I call this Flock of Seagulls. And if you don't like seagulls, you can pick your own bird. But it's an idea of crossing over and being a gateway to Goodyear where you can have shade when you cross that road. And also, it's kind of interesting if you get inside of something your way across it. So whatever, this isn't the design yet, but this is an idea. So now let's move to the east side. And there we have the meditation, what's called precinct day, meditation observance. We have therapeutic and healing. We have challenge, adventure, and we have another water play immersion portion. Again, you can see the water course, not easily on this little drawing, but the water comes in right here, and it works its way, or it doesn't do that, goes its way this way and works its way out here and then to the Aquafria River. So, did that, yeah, that's correct. The meditation observance area, this is where there's a mesquite forest already developing. And so we want to enhance that. And this is the kind of place where you go, where you kind of get away from structure. You get into the forest, you get into the field. This is the skyfield I talked about earlier, which could have anything, could be just an open space, or it could be a place for people to play games, looking up at the sky and meditating about life or things in nature, in big nature. The next precinct next to it is related closely as a therapeutic and healing. This is where you could have labyrinths, reflexology. Anybody know where that came from, reflexology? China. And they walked in their sandals on rocks to massage their feet. They're really big on massage over there. Been over there a lot. And, but that's where that idea came from. So we'll bring those kinds of concepts into the park, things that make people healthy and happy and better because of it. So the therapeutic gardens, you can see coming from, I guess Abrazo is right up above where that line is, the red line, that's the cross-section. You can see a large terrace area up there that could be for events, could have tents there. And then you work your way down to the other terraces, therapeutic gardens, and then you go down into the water. Now we're getting into a place where there's lots of water when the rains hit, right? And then they go away. But this is like today, this would be, look like this. It would be flooded. That whole basin below there would be flooded, not the terraces. Those would be fine. And then you can see the way the architecture wraps around the edges. That's again, we're talking about maybe office and residential. And more of those orange things, which are the rufuses, so they can be put throughout the park, mixed with trees. And then you'll see a spot in the middle there that looks like a circus. It could be a circus in the Skyfields or a planetarium. We have two to go. Seven's a good number. So the number six is the challenge adventure. Nike has a running course up in the Pacific Northwest that's cut right into the forest, and it's a wonderful track to run, because most tracks that you get on are just like in schoolyards. And you have bleachers and you just, so the idea here is that potentially this track can go out over the water course and back again. So you're going into the trees, and you're going back into the desert, and you keep doing it and go different directions. But, and use it not for racing, but for measuring your progress or racing your friend. You know, you want to beat somebody. You don't like them today. Let's go out and race. I'll take you out on the track. There's other things here, like the giant playground that I call Colossus, places for bikes. The terraces, you can see the elevated running track where people are running over the wetland in the trees. You can see the terraces leading up to a pavilion where event terraces can be again. And next, we have the, sort of, every part of this park is amazing, I think. But this is the one where it's the most anti-desert in a way, because there's water, and it's there all the time. Water in the desert is ephemeral. It hits you and then it goes, like it's been doing around here lately. And this is a place where water is permanent for swimming and touching, to get wet on any day. It'll be there, not lots of it, but enough. And this is also a place where you'll see the big giant trees, like Cottonwood and Sycamore. Do you guys know what Sycamore Tree looks like? Have you seen that one? I can't believe, up in, not Tlalac, is it Tlalapaki up in Sedona? Isn't that cool, those big trees in there? That's Sycamore. I see them all over the world as well. In Shanghai, they put their power cords through them. It's kind of crazy poles. So this gives a cross-section of that area, and you can see the sort of the lounging area that half-moon piece is the actual swimming pool. And the funny shapes next to it are the biofiltration system that makes the water pure, so you can play in it. And the forest is down below it. And that's my buddy. That is another part of a park that's essential, that we get artists involved in it at the right times, other designers, people that have ideas that we didn't think of. The troll is amazing for selfies. And I have to say something about selfies. I've got daughters, and they're really big on selfies, and I'm in a whole lot of them, and I don't like them. That's a whole nother story, but I'm everywhere because of my daughters. But the idea of this park is, it's selfie park. Everywhere you go in this park is that moment where you have to take a picture of you in this park, because it's amazing. There's a troll, maybe not a troll, a havelina or something, or a beautiful, beautiful garden, like this is the Garden at Getty by Charles Irwin, another artist. Some artists just have a way of thinking differently and causes to think differently about our lives, and I think we want to have that in the park, even if it means this. Health and wellness can be really hard. It can kill you, right? Like this one. But the European parks have a real sense of humor about the cycle of life, and I would like to introduce that into this park. They're not afraid of this, but embracing it. And this is, I think, my last slide. And this is up here, on the park, we have these lines that go across on both sides of the park. These long, straight piers. And these are piers where everybody, anybody can cut through the park with ease. You know, you can have your 98-year-old grandmother come with you, and she can walk the park and see what's there. And I think that's kind of one of the things we want to make sure, is that everything can happen in the park.
Before you go any further, let's give it a round of applause for that vision.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to ask Stan Holm to come up and comment on behalf of the partnership. Oh, I'm sorry. John Kuhn.
Welcome, John. It's nice to see you.
Mayor, nice to see you again. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm here today to show my support for your adoption of the master plan. And also to thank you for funding the, funding the master planning effort and making your staff available to the community health partnership throughout our process. Adoption of this plan is really a big step forward in advancing this innovative idea to improve community health. The partnership has much more work to do with the community, with other interested healthcare partners and potential investors to really make this a reality. But that doesn't take away or diminish the importance of what we're doing here today in terms of adopting this master plan. So as one of the originators of this park idea, I just wanted to say to you that this more than meets, it exceeds my idea here and my expectations for the park. So thank you for your participation in this. At this point, I want to turn it over to Karen Edg with CrossFit Fury.
Thank you very much, John. And special when you say it exceeds. After being with you at White Plains and sort of following as this goes on, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Edg, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of my husband, Peter Edg, who is on the advisory board for Wellspring Park. We are both active members in the community. I am a teacher at Desert Edge High School, and we own a local business, CrossFit Fury. Nearly 10 years ago, Peter set a course to improve the community's health through fitness. Since then, we have influenced the health and well-being of a few thousand Goodyear and West Valley residents, and we continue to grow and develop a healthy community. We believe this park will provide innovative ways to empower families to take control and improve their health. We both have a passion for helping the youth. The future is in their hands, and we want to help guide them. By positively influencing a child at a young age to make good choices when it comes to healthy eating habits and fitness, this will stick with them for the rest of their lives. The park will provide them a place to do physical activity, explore nature, and be creative. We are committed to providing the opportunities for anyone to reach their full potential, and the Wellspring Concept will magnify this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for your words. And tell Peter we're sorry he couldn't be here this evening. I know how passionate he has been about this from the beginning, but thank you for representing it.
Thank you.
Husband and wife. Thank you.
I'll have to move this down a bit. Can you still see me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Deb Robinson, and I'm a former Goodyear resident for 13 years. I just moved just adjacent. Also a member of the Goodyear General Plan Committee. I was the Healthy Communities Champion, supporting healthy eating and active living. And also worked with Goodyear in Action, which became Arizona in Action. So I've been involved in the Goodyear Health Project since January this year. I serve as an advisory board member, and I'm also heading up the Health Data Committee. I represent the Arizona Department of Health Services tonight as the Chief of Community Innovations, and this project is perfect for that because it is innovative. And I work in the Bureau of Nutrition and Physical Activity, which is in direct alignment with this park. Our goal at the State Health Department is to make the healthy choice the easy choice, and you've probably heard that before. The State Health Department developed a state health improvement plan with many community stakeholders, and one of the focused areas is to create healthy communities and lifestyles. The Built Environment Strategy considers how we design our communities, which can greatly impact overall health. The Goodyear Health Park is a perfect example of creating the conditions that will empower Goodyear residents and visitors to adopt a healthy lifestyle. It'll increase opportunities for healthy eating options, community gardens, farmers' markets, healthy food retail, and also give opportunities for all residents of all abilities to engage in physical activity in a safe environment. As a public health expert, I strongly encourage you to support the development of the Goodyear Health Park and to approve the master conceptual plan. This is truly an innovative project, and it has great potential to improve the population's health. The State Health Department is committed to supporting this project through technical assistance and potential grant opportunities. So now is the time to create a culture that supports making the healthy choice the easy choice. Thank you.
Deborah, thank you very, very much for coming forth. You said the Magic Birds Grant. That does perk us a little bit, but I just want to thank you for being a part of this and using your expertise and helping us move this further. So thank you.
I've got to move this back up. Mayor and Council, I'm Alan Swain, Assistant Vice President with Cancer Treatment Centers of America. Just want to tell you real quick, Cancer Treatment Centers of America is very excited to be a part of this project and to be in such close proximity. What really is engaging for us is the fact that we are calling this a wellness park. This park promotes many of the same values that CTC has, mind, body, spirit. Promoting a healthy lifestyle, not just for the city of Goodyear, but all of our patients in the entire region. It's instrumental. I'd also like to, just real quick, recognize Nathan and Pam for getting all this together. Done a great job over the last couple of years. I know that we've all been working very hard on this.
You mind just holding that? Let's get a hand for them, because it's been really detailed work, so.
And lastly, a big thank you to Logan Simpson team. Did a remarkable job.
Thank you very much. And Alan, of course, we're very pleased that you were here tonight and that you brought the words of CTC. We respect you and we respect the facility so much. So thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
I'm Jerry Wilson. I'm a member of the Goodyear Parks and Recreation Committee, and I am here for Brian Murphy, who is the chairman of the committee. He's not able to attend tonight, but he did write a letter, which I'm here to read tonight. Dear esteemed Goodyear Council members, this letter stands in my place of attending the council meeting this evening. I truly wanted to attend, as I felt the Wellspring Park project has the potential to create a model for public and private partnerships. By completion, we will have a one-of-a-kind health park that displays how the community wellness can and should be cooperative effort between the healthcare community and the cities they operate their facilities in. The last several months of meetings have been very exciting, and I believe the hard work of the Goodyear Health Park Executive Board has paid off. The park presentation will speak for itself, however, what I have found the most impression is the dedication of the health services community. The top executives of Abrazo Health, Adelinta Health, and Cancer Treatment Centers of America have each consistently carved out time from their required duties of running modern healthcare facilities to attend monthly workshops. Since March, these executives, along with other stakeholders, have attended workshops and meetings lasting several hours. Getting a few few minutes for these Getting in a few few minutes for these folks is difficult, let alone multiple hours over several months. This type of dedication shows how much they believe in the project and are willing to see it through to completion. As a member of the Goodyear Park Commission for several years and recently voted in chairman, Wellspring Park can only be described as incredibly exciting. I joined the commission several years ago, and I love the outdoors and wanted to share to help shape a growing city. Wellspring's fits that vision by creating an icon in the valley and perhaps nationwide. The recently redone Parks and Recreation Master Plan falls perfectly in line with Wellspring Park. It goes beyond that plan and includes healthcare providers as part of the driving force. We have the opportunity to create a location that takes some pain out of the being ill by allowing healthcare providers to encourage their patients to step outdoors, if even just to escape the confines of their room. Rehabilitation can occur outside instead of always in enclosed rooms. Families can step right outside of the entrance of their respective provider and enjoy a quiet place away from the hustle and bust of a hospital. We have the opportunity to become an example within Parks and Recreation Committee while being a model for health and wellness for cities. The park will be much more than a park. It will be an economic driver for our city. This can be an anchor. I hope each of you will see the benefit of seeing this park to completion as much as I can. All of us involved are very impressed with the dedication of Logan Simpson and their team. They have created a roadmap for us with the help of city staff and local stakeholders to create a truly unique vision. Your support of the project and the next step in putting Goodyear on the map is an example of taking community health seriously while working with private entities to complete the vision. Sincerely, Brian Murphy, Chairman, Goodyear Parks and Recreation Commission.
Jerry, thank you so much for bringing his birds alive tonight. We're sorry he couldn't attend, but he did a great job. Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing us this opportunity tonight to speak to you. I really want to also, as already been mentioned, thank your team for this. And tonight, as we look at your vote for approval of the master plan, I truly believe it was meant to be. When I reflect on where we started with a vision from John Kuhn grabbing me to the side saying, "Stan, I want to talk to you about something not related to your hospital, but really the other side of what we can do for our population, our citizens, and that's wellness," we knew it was meant to be. When we looked at the fact that we didn't own, we, the city, did not own the land, and there was a hurdle to get over. The city went to the county, was able to acquire it, as mentioned earlier. We knew it was meant to be. When we looked at the Herculean effort that took alone, to really, none of this would have happened without the land being part of the city. And then looking at the city saying, "We have to invest resources in the beginning to nurture this and make sure that we can move forward with just the planning of it," we knew it was meant to be. When we looked at putting together a plan to bring in a consultant, was it really going to bring in top-talented consultants to really create that visionary, innovative, world-class park that we were looking to do? We had a huge response from, as you know, consultants that were in the RFP process, and then obviously Logan Simpson was selected. We knew that was meant to be. You saw some of the incredible vision tonight that was meant to be. When we look at what the city did with our grant and what Pam did behind the scenes to help move some of that along, and then we were the recipient of one of those nine grants nationally with GE looking for innovations, we knew it was meant to be. When we created the partnership, where you had a public and private partnership, where others are already looking to this as a model for future arrangements, where the burden can't be on the backs of just city government, it's got to be tied to public-private partnerships, that came together nicely, and it was meant to be. When we look at where the park is and the focus of the city council on a park, we knew that with your master plan, you took the voice of your residents that said, "We want better access to parks." It was already part of your master plan, so putting this park at the center of it, we know was meant to be. When we look at what we're expecting to do with this park, the innovation behind that, very, very rewarding. We knew it was meant to be. And on behalf of Avine, who was really going to be your closer tonight, her passion for what this park means to the health and wellness of our community. You heard from some great speakers tonight, presenters, and those who are part of the partnership. We know it's meant to be, and so adopting this on behalf of all of us, we hope, is also meant to be for the plan. Want to also move forward to the next steps, advancing the plan. So tonight, obviously, we're looking for you to advance the plan. Marketing and branding was part of this development. It's exciting to think that we actually, through efforts that sometimes cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, came through Logan Simpson as a subsidiary action. They did part of this to name the park, Wellspring Park. We knew that was meant to be, as he shared with you and teased you a little bit with the naming of Wellspring Park and what that means to a park as the centerpiece of something that we know will be recognized nationally, as it already is tied to that through the GE grant. And also, grant funding was talked about. Website development is underway, as we're looking at what that needs to be for next steps. Creating the nonprofit. What was nice is we're creating our own nonprofit through the city, but our Partners for Health at the hospital also said, "If you need a bridge," because sometimes that takes some time as you start garnishing the needs for raising funds, they've already approved that you can utilize their nonprofit as a resource for accepting funds and then obviously distributing funds out of it while we're developing that nonprofit. Again, these things come together, and it's meant to be. We look at the development of this park and the connection to trails. It was mentioned earlier, how can we make this bigger than just right the center focus of Goodyear? There's trails that come to 303 and through Avondale that fit perfectly with this location. We know it's meant to be. Developing implementation and funding strategies are next. That's huge. You looked at how big we're thinking for this park. We're not talking hundreds of thousands. We're looking at millions of dollars to make this park a reality. We are very encouraged, though, that this is a journey. They have set it out in those segments, as Logan Simpson described to you, so that you can put pockets in place. We already know that there are individuals that have said, "Come see me when this master plan is developed. We want to talk to you about investment." Avine, who has connected with some of the major philanthropic families in metro Phoenix, has already teased some of those major givers and donors who've said, "Come to me. I'm very excited about putting our names tied to a location like this," to where it really lasts beyond normal giving when you're thinking of health and wellness in parks. So we know that funding is going to be a big deal, but to start that funding, those individuals that want to give, those companies that want to give, the grant applications that need to be submitted, all tied to, do you have a master plan? Let's share the vision with them first, and we know that follows. And our teams and the partnership has already talked about how it's not just the nucleus of the partnership. We have to create very structured mechanisms of how we develop funding sources for this, and it is a journey. It's going to be multiple years to raise the funds we're talking about, but it's going to be a spoke of revenue sources that we know will exist, and there is already the buzz we talked about. People are waiting to give to this park, and it all starts with the development or the acceptance of the plan this evening. So thank you.
Stan, thank you for all your words, and you were just as passionate as Avine. We really appreciate it. We appreciate your cooperation and Abrazo's cooperation, and we're just very excited about. Let's give a hand for his summation. It was just really great.
And with that, Mayor and Council, we're prepared to answer questions and ask that you consider adopting the conceptual master plan.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Nope. I have someone raising their hand, so please come forward and state your name and your address.
Mayor and Council, my name is John Boome. I live at 15353 West Westview in Palm Valley, Phase 5, and I'm here tonight just to represent the father and a community member that's concerned about health and fitness in this community. I'm also a friend of many of the people involved in this project, and I just want to give a voice to, I know you guys are sold on this already. I can tell by your body language, but I would just say I'm a big fan of being in the outdoors. I got three kids that work very hard to raise as healthy individuals in a holistic approach. And as you know, being parents yourselves, it's very difficult to do that sometimes in Goodyear. I have a house in Flagstaff. We go up there just for that purpose, so I can rock climb and get outdoors and do those things, and it takes a lot of time. I go to extraordinary effort as a father and a citizen in this community to get outside and do that. So the idea of having a park like this is just really amazing. As you can tell, money and people follow vision, and this park has a ton of vision behind it, not only from the professionals you've heard about from tonight, but also just from the citizens, the parents, and the community members. There's also something kind of going on socially that's interesting, I think, in today's world, which is a lot of our kids have a harder time connecting face-to-face, you know, with the digital world that they live in. There's also less students involved in traditional sports that I would have grown up doing, and this is giving us an opportunity with this park to create both connected community in terms of face-to-face involvement, but also it's given us an opportunity to allow kids to interact and be healthy outside something of a traditional team sport that requires you to be gone every weekend, to be out every night. This is something that you could turn into a lifestyle and be a part of. And I've been behind the scenes in a lot of this stuff with a lot of these folks, and there is so much energy in this community around this idea, and the future of this is just something I think would carry a great voice for Goodyear across the whole state. So again, thank you for your time, Mayor and Council, tonight, and I appreciate your considerations for this project, and I'm sure they have it. So thank you.
Thank you for coming before us.
And that was not staged.
Ah. All right. Since we don't have any more speaker cards, we're ready to go. Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the Goodyear Community Health Park Conceptual Master Plan? Do I hear a motion?
Move. I move for that.
Second.
I heard a motion by Brandon Hampton and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Yes.
Sure. Yeah, I'm very excited about this initiative as a father as well and with family and health and wellness. I think it's going to be a great jewel of Goodyear and the Southwest Valley to have something that we can make a statement on about health and wellness and community and bringing the community together, all generations from, yeah, throughout our city, because I think everybody can use this park and utilize it, and it'd be beneficial to all people in the community. So thank you for everybody's hard work through this whole process, and I'm looking forward to taking my kids to this park and playing in it and seeing all the rest of the Goodyear residents enjoying it as well. So thank you.
Jerry?
Wow. It's just absolutely fabulous. I want to thank the city staff. You guys worked so hard doing this, and I know this has been something that we've been talking about for a while. And thank all the advisory board members and all the executive board members and all the citizens and everyone else that's been a part of this. And Logan Simpson, that just blew me away. We're sitting there going, "Oh, we like this. We like this. That looks fun." And I think it is a lifestyle for people at all phases. I love how it's like there's, and I'm so excited, there's like water, but there's places to play, and there's places to meditate. And you're talking about having your kids. My parents live here too, and they're older, and I have children here, so I have three generations. And I look at this, and I say, "This is a place for all generations." You can go there, and it just looks so calm and soothing, but yet there's fun and excitement for the younger people, and I am just, I am so excited. My only thing is like, "Let's move it faster," you know? That would be my only thing, is I just absolutely love it. So thank you for all your work, and I'm just, you can tell I'm excited. Your answer?
Well, you know, we all know that dreams start those visions, and this was outstanding. In fact, I have to call it a creative masterpiece of wellness, is how I really looked at that and captured it. And that's something that we've been trying to do in our city, is we've been, you know, laying forward a continuum of care and of healthness and of wellness. And, you know, Deb, when I saw you walk in the door, and I was like, "Oh, my goodness, my old buddy, 10 years ago on Goodyear in Action." The fact that, you know, this would have been such a dream back then, because that's what, you know, so many of us have wanted for our city was with health and wellness. I think we are going to have sponsorships and naming rights people are going to want for so many different things. People are going to want to jump on board with this. You know, there's something I have to say, in the business industry that I'm in, I get to go to many states every year for jewelry shows. And I'll have to admit, I mean, most jewelry shows are in pretty cool cities, and I've been to about 30 different states, and I have seen all these fabulous parks and amenities that resorts will come around and will be part of. And there is a lot to be said about health tourism. And so I would have to say, I know there's a lot of things that we have to work out first. I mean, you got to test the ground. You have to make sure where the water is going to come from. We have to be high and dry. I mean, this is a water basin. I mean, there's many things that they're going to take some time to put together. But I have to say, and I don't know how the RFP world works, but I truly believe to kick this off, once those things are in place, is you need to go out for an RFP, for a resort, for a hotelier, because that is going to draw that economic driving mechanism we want, because not only will it help with foundation of funding, but it will be a lure, because people want to travel to be in healthy places. And so I do see that part of just that, you know, entity that goes with it that will help drive opportunity. And John, Stan, Brian, I give you guys a lot of great credit. Nathan, I know you've all worked hard at this and bringing this forward to us. You know, it's risky. We all know that. But that's the cool thing about Goodyear is that it's just an open book for us, and we can try things, and we can see by the amount of people that came out here to want to be part of this, people want to jump on board of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill?
Oh.
Aren't you off guard?
A little bit. I was expecting the progression. I just have a couple of practical questions, and then I've got a little thing I want to read, which kind of hits this, because this whole thing is very exciting. We've, somewhere in that timeline, we created this board, this nonprofit piece trust, I don't know what we're calling it.
Charter.
Charter.
Partnership.
So when we did that, did we give up ownership or control of that property? We did, you know, the master plan, this is just incredibly awesome, but there's some practical things on my brain. I couldn't, help me with that.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, the charter was written to protect and give the city certain privileges and rights because it is city property, and we do have to ensure that, from a legal standpoint, it continues to function in its intended purpose. So having said that, there are protections in the charter that basically allow the city to, you know, make decisions with regards to the land and what's going in.
Okay, so we technically retained control?
Correct. And now, yes.
This question of all things.
Mayor, Councilmember.
Yes, I recognize Brian.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, if I can just add to that. Nathan's entirely on point. Now, as it relates to vertical development or other developments in there, the city has to have the rights for that because we have to protect the integrity of the basins. So we will be making sure that that happens. So those controls remain with the city. Now, you get into programmatic and you get into some of the operations, no. But that's what makes this, I think, so great, is that we know that we will protect the basins, but we also know that there are opportunities to take a lot of that outside of the flood control areas and develop vertically in and around the basins as well. So we will have to have all approval rights for vertical development or anything that may pass the basins.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then the other thing that, and I realize this is the conceptual, and I'm assuming the next step is an actual master plan?
That is correct. It's moving this from conceptual to more schematic design that would come back before council for approval. That is when they'll be looking at specific amenities that will actually be going into the park, correct?
Okay. So then, the final question that I have was, as I look at this whole thing, and we're trying to bring a lot of people to it, we are a transportation-driven community and basically society out here. I did not see a single parking place, a single, and I realize that goes completely I did not see a single parking place, a single, and I realize that goes completely against the concept, but as we're getting ready to move into master planning, I hope that we, that we'll see that part of it as well, because I would love for people to be able to come to see it.
It's a great point. There are mentions of parking through future development and potential parking garages, but that, that is something that we'll get into more detail with, as, as we advance the plan.
Okay. So, now, since we've spent almost an hour kind of pontificating on the benefit of this, I was, I read this article, and it really struck me about the, about the park, and I think it, and it's, and it's a great idea. Says, "When you are proactively creating and collaborating with many different people, the whole becomes different and better than the sum of its parts. This is why you can't plan for everything," which I know was funny coming from me, "because at the highest level, you are, you transcend your need to have things exactly the way you want them. You know that with the help of other people, you can do things 10, 100, or 1,000 times bigger than you could ever have conceived on your own." And I think that really speaks to the collaboration piece of this. And rather than expecting a particular outcome, you are completely confident that the best outcome will ensue. And this is how you create and contribute beyond anything you could ever have comprehended. Collaboration and synergy lead to new innovations and ultimately human evolution. That's how old and outdated rules are redefined and replaced with new and better ones, thus resulting in a changing global environment. And I think that really, for me, summarized this whole concept of what this park means for us as a community, and that it, we're gonna do something bigger and better than we ever, than we ever thought of just, quote unquote, another community park. So, Nathan and the gang that, and I'm put you all in that, in that boat, thank you so much for the work that you've done, and look forward to seeing the master plan.
Thank you, Bill. Joe?
You know, it's not a whole lot to say, once you get down to this point, I tend to agree with all my fellow council members to this point. Want to thank everybody who put the effort, you know, into this. I guess the only practical question I have is, have you developed timelines as you move forward from your marketing timelines on when you expect, you know, the actual details to come in, timelines on how you're gonna go about reaching out, and maybe some, what do you, what do you call it, points in which you expect maybe certain fundraising efforts and, and that, has any of that been mapped out overall on your objectives as you move forward?
Definitely, definitely on the radar for the, for the partnership to work through. We just had this discussion at the last partnership meeting, and so they're in the process now of putting that roadmap together.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be looking forward to seeing that roadmap when you have it. Thank you.
Wally?
Okay, I have some questions, and some of them Nathan answered for me, but I'm looking at this entirely different than the rest of my council, because I've been involved in park and recreation over 40 years, and I know what a conceptual park is, and it's so easy to get so emotional with this thing and say, yes, dump everything in there, but in reality, we may not be able to do that exactly, and this isn't necessarily going to be our bible that's going to be developed. I'm sure other ideas will come out and they start working. The city managers did say that the city manager or his designee would be our representative as a stakeholder, so when Mr. Dahlke leaves, then the new city manager would assume that position. Is that correct?
The charter states city manager or designee. I'm not sure who that may be.
The new city manager would have that option.
City manager would have that, that option to chair it or, and, and it's not just participate, it's, it's chairing the, the board.
Right. And then, I did share with you, I'm not thrilled with Spring. Wellspring is the name because we have a church in that, and I'm also very familiar with Wellspring Oncology Group, so I get it. I mean, it sounds medical to me, so it's okay, but I, I was surprised that we came up with the name so quickly since we hadn't really seen the plan. And my next question is over on page. Some of them you've answered. I am, I read in here where you said that the foundation would be determining the use of the land to sell or lease part of our property, and I am not comfortable with that inasmuch as that land belongs to the city of Goodyear, and we should be the ones that determine what goes in there and what doesn't go in there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As the city manager stated earlier in the charter, it does outline that the city retains those rights with regards to the land in terms of land leasing or what's going in.
Okay, because he was talking about the basins and stuff, and I get that, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that if, that the foundation, because I understand what the foundation is, because I formed a foundation for the Goodyear Litchfield Train Station, and I know how that operates, and that was under similar, I guess, similarity to what is being done here. However, I just want to make sure that the city is protected inasmuch as the business or whatever is done to lease or sell that land, we are a partner or we are the leasing or selling agent.
We are 100% in control of land leasing and land sales, whatever, whatever that may be.
Okay, I get it. All right. And then, I've read in great length about the water. I understand, I know we have water, I know we can get water there. I'm assuming that the city is going to play a major role in getting water to that site. Maybe not, but I imagine we're going to have the conversation, and I don't think it's all going to be Liberty Water. I think there'll be some way that we'll be able to negotiate using some of the city water as well as Liberty, but I just don't want to lose sight that as a city, we have to develop and pay for and build a water line to get us to the SRP water that's really, really critical. So, while I appreciate all this extra information that we were given that water could get to the site, which we, we appreciate, I just want you to know, that's on my radar. And with that, I'm excited about the park. I have been involved in two other conceptual parks, and I know that I, I want the public to know that while this is conceptual, if they get their hands on this and they see all these pretty pictures of all these fun children and all these fun artworks, that doesn't necessarily mean that's gonna be in our park. It's just an idea of what possibly could go into it, and I'm sure it's going to be very thoughtfully developed, and it's going to be exciting and fun, and I, I, I know we can only do a portion at a time because it is such a large project. And we're still developing the park in Australia after, what, eight, 10, 15 years, so please be patient with us and be patient with the foundation, be patient with the stakeholders, because they have this vision and they're gonna move forward, but it's gonna be very liquid, and it's going to, a lot of things are gonna have to fall into place before you see the first dirt shovel or whatever.
Thank you for those comments.
So, that's it. But Nathan, good job. It's exciting, it's fun.
I just want to thank all the executive board who came before us tonight and talked, and the advisory board, and the citizens for their words and for painting the picture. And it is, it is a picture being painted at this time. I can understand some of the concerns of the council, but when you have such collaboration, cooperation, and such brilliant minds coming together, this is gonna happen. It'll, and, and our creativity, it will happen, right? It takes time.
If it was meant to be.
It's meant to be.
So, we're gonna vote on this, and because this is such a special one, I'm not gonna ask just all, we're gonna do a roll call. So, would you roll call vote this for me, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauritano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
That's a pass, seven to no.
Thank you. Nathan, thank you so much. All right, we're in 7.3, and that's to consider adopting the revisions to the city's investment policy. Finance Director Doug Sandstrom to present.
Doug?
Now the item you've been waiting for all night.
Sorry.
I'm here to talk about proposed revisions to our city investment policy, go over those different proposals, and then ask you to adopt Resolution 171806. Going over a little history, our investment options, the city has basically two investment options. One is the local government investment pool. Prior to 2010, that is where 100% of our investment options occurred. There are several different options within the pool, from short-term and long-term, to some that include corporates, to some that are just 100% governmental. The way the different pools are set up, it's not an individualized investment, it is a pool, so what other entities do in that has some impact on what the safety and liquidity and the rates that we would get with our investment. The second option is management investment. In 2010, the city entered into a contract with PFM, Public Financial Management, to be our investment advisor, and they set up an individualized portfolio for the city of Goodyear. It's a direct management of our funds based on our criteria, and it was a way that the city could increase earnings without increasing our risk. Generally, since 2010, we have maintained a cash balance of about $90 million invested between the LGIP and our account with PFM. As of the end of March, we had $117 million invested in the two, with $55 million in LGIP, the rest in PFM at $62 million. The LGIP, that is extremely liquid. It is, within 24 hours, we could withdraw that entire $55 million without any kind of penalties, damage whatsoever. PFM at $62 million, it's longer term, we can invest up to a five-year period, we do not have anything invested that long, but it's a more planned exit when we come to that. So, we use that when we manage our, our cash flow. Things that we do not need for sure, we'll put into PFM to get that increased interest rate. Investment performance, one of the things in our policy is it requires that we have a benchmark, which is the Bank of America Merrill Lynch Performance, one to three-year U.S. Treasury Index. That is the purple one on there. Blue is our PFM portfolio, and then the green one is that overnight LGIP fund that we've been doing. You can see by going from LGIP to a managed account, we are making quite a bit more in interest. To put that in dollar terms, in fiscal year 2015, we earned $512,000 of interest across all three of those, or across the two of them. The increase that you see in fiscal year 2016 with the markets doing better, that was just short of $1 million at $947,000, and we are on track to do that again for fiscal year 2017. Our city's investment advisor, PFM, are here tonight. If we get into any kind of detailed questions and anybody wants to speak, Paulina Wu with PFM, they have been our advisor since 2010 when we went through an RFP process. They are an SEC-registered independent investment advisor. That's something that's very important because that says they have a fiduciary responsibility to be looking out for our best interests. They are paid a flat eight basis points based on the amount of money that we have invested with them. They don't get any kind of commissions or anything to try to steer us towards certain investments. The diff, I said, mentioned eight basis points for PFM. The state of Arizona LGIP charges us five basis points, so it's just slightly higher to get that personalized independent management. The policy does require periodic reviews, and that's what's bringing the policy before you today. The three big areas that we're looking at are compliance with state and city laws, incorporation of best practices, and then making sure that we're reflecting the city's risk tolerance and goals of the investment policy. Compliance with state laws, the two changes that were made to comply with state law is to reflect a ratings, a ratings of two nationally recognized organizations. That is your Standard and Poor, Fitch, Moody's. It used to require three, but the way corporate and, corporate and, corporate bonds are going, there's fewer entities that are gonna get triple, more than two rating agencies to do that, so the state law has modified to account for that. Municipal bonds are still free, based on the fact that we are still getting multiple ratings on municipal bonds. We're removing outdated languages and references, and other references such as the National Association of Securities Dealers. The SEC has changed how they call those different things, so it's small little changes like that. And then general document cleanup to help with the flow inconsistency, such as using return all the way through as opposed to yield, referring to the finance, our investment officer instead of the finance director, they were interchangeable. So, things that did not change the intent of the policy, just general cleanup. Incorporation of industry best practices, again, that use of investment advisor instead of finance director, and then we updated the authorized financial institutions, depositories, requirements. That, again, goes to some changes in the SEC rules and advice from our investment advisor. The one major change that we do have in here is adding explicit sector and issuer limits. Under our current policy, we have a limit of 5% for any one corporate entity, so we could have up to 5% of our pool invested in General Electric, for example. What we're doing here is putting additional protections in there of sector limitations, so we can only have, when you get to commercial paper, only 50% of our total portfolio could be in commercial paper. As it stands today, 100% could be in that. So, it gets it down to a sector limitation and then retains that individual limitation as well, so we would not be able to invest too heavily in one individual company. When it comes to everything that is 100% guaranteed and insured by the federal government, we are allowed to do 100% in those areas. Retention, are the city's risk tolerance, those remain the same. The order that we look at when we invest our money is safety of our capital to make sure that we do not lose any of our principal. Liquidity, if we need the money, we've got the ability to go and go and get it quickly. And then the final thing is return. Once we have met the safety and liquidity requirements, are we gonna get a good return out of it? And that's what the investment policy has allowed us to do over the last few years. So, in summary, the principle and objectives of the policy remain intact. We have increased definition of our risk tolerances, and we are now completely in line with state law and some best practices in the area. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions and ask the council approve Resolution 171806.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 17-1806 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 17-1806, adopting revisions to the city of Goodyear investment policy.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Is that right?
The other way around.
The other way around. All right. Heard a motion from Council Pizzillo and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
You feel comfortable with the split of what we can turn around in 24 hours versus longer term?
Yes, I do. We'll actually be looking at putting more of the money into the longer term. We're gonna look at what our cash flow is and what our historical needs have been and transfer more into the long term. And by long term, that is anything from 30 days up to that five-year moment, so we'll always be making sure we have enough.
What percentage is greater than three years?
I will ask our advisor to come up, and maybe she knows that answer. This is Paulina Wu from PFM.
Welcome, Paulina.
Hello.
Hello, sorry, I'm gonna move this down quite a bit shorter. Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Paulina Wu with PFM. I'm a director, and I've worked with the city since we started working back in 2010. So, the question was, how much is usually beyond that three-year limit?
Yeah, what percentage?
So, the city has a benchmark of one to three, which means the average portfolio maturity is, is about 1.8 years. There's usually anywhere from 2% to 5%, that's usually about 3.5 years and under. We don't ever really go past three and a half years because of where the strategy is.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank, thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Doug, I want to make you feel good. So, thank you for your financial creativity masterpiece that you have been giving to so ten So, thank you for your financial creativity masterpiece that you have been giving tonight. You know, actually, I'm very, I'm very happy with the adding of the explicit sector and issuer limits. I think that was really smart, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other comments?
How long is the renewed cooperative procurement contract?
The one that we just did with the town of Florence?
Oh, with, it's going to be, it's a five, it's a three-year contract with two one-year renewals, so five years total. Did you hear that?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Seven oh, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Is everybody all right to keep going? Okay, that's 7.4 on business to consider approving a budget transfer policy and adopting financial policy revisions. Budget and Research Manager Lori Wiganroff to present. Lori?
Thank you. Back again? Thought you didn't have me anymore after last week, but I'm back.
We love seeing you.
So, I want to talk to you about potential asking for your approval of a budget transfer policy, where the council would be making some preapprovals of certain types of budget transfers. And so, one of the reasons we'd like, or we think a budget transfer policy, or some of the reasons we think a budget transfer policy is appropriate, as I have spent the last three years coming before you with budget transfers, I've heard some questions and some concerns. Some of those are about, you are occasionally asked to approve a budget transfer after the fact, and in some cases, there's good reasons for that. There's also issues of efficiency of service and project delivery, we can't get to a council agenda in a day, it takes several weeks to get to an agenda item. That could cause delays in delivering services. There are also issues with risk associated with the carryover portion of the budget. We'll talk about that a little bit more later, but essentially, those budgets are often larger than they need to be. And then there's a lot of different policies and other resolutions that address budget transfers or related to budget transfers that would also encourage us to maybe make some different actions here. So, at first, I thought I'd just kind of go over what budget transfers you don't see. You don't see all the budget transfers. If something's moving around, you know, if a department is just making a change within their own budget, within the same fund, you know, for example, their utility costs are higher than they budgeted for, and they find a way to absorb that by spending less on supplies, you know, that's the type of thing that's happening on a, you know, not a daily basis, but it is happening on a weekly basis. In other cases, there's technical corrections that are not required by state law, which means they aren't crossing fund or purpose, so it's not going from the police department budget to the parks budget or something like that. These are often things where, you know, for example, right now, I'm hearing rumblings that we have a CIP project for the health clinic that was approved in this year's budget. It was set up in facilities, because that's where we got the estimates from, but ultimately, it's really a human services project to be managed by engineering. So, we're going to need to change the accounting structure for it. No change in the funding, no change in the project, it's technically just budgeted in the wrong place. We have some lump-sum budgets, such as for the traffic signal, the warranted traffic signal, that we budget in one project, but then when we want to actually implement a project, we want to charge it to its own project number, so we have to make a technical change on something like that. And then there's these occasional things where we thought something would be under $5,000, it ends up being $5,200, and that technically calls for a different line item in the accounting system. So, it's just a, again, no change in what we're doing, just having to move the line. I'll go over some of the examples of the types of things that would be covered under the policy that we're asking you to approve today. One of those items, and I'm going to show you examples of prior budget transfers that you have approved, that would no longer come forward if this policy were in place. One of those would be unanticipated carryovers of projects and contracts budgeted in the prior year. And as you'll see later, there's a limit of $75,000 on these. And these are some of those cases where there may be efficiency or service delays, because the item was already underway in the prior year, and we just did not anticipate it would carry over. So, when you approve the carryover or budget transfer in the last fiscal year, these three items are the types of items that would have fallen under what would now be this policy. There are also grants that we receive throughout the year. In some cases, those grants you may have acted on individually, or there is another case with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, where you've done a blanket approval of the departments being able to apply for those grants, but the related budget transfer isn't involved in those approvals. And this is just one of many examples, and in this case, it was also an after-the-fact one. At the end of June, you approved a budget transfer for a Buckle Up Arizona campaign. That campaign, the notice of getting those funds and the actual campaign taking place did not allow us time to get to you to have that budget transfer approved in advance. We sometimes during the year get donations that are restricted to very specific things. In November, most recent November, we received a donation for the Mayor Select Scholarships. The department actually ended up changing the timing of when they were planning on awarding those scholarships, because we needed to get to council with a budget transfer. So, it's another example of, it's a donation, it's restricted, and it's, the timing of getting to council is sometimes a barrier or a deterrent. Carryover reconciliation, this is the area I mentioned earlier where there is some risk. If you'll recall, we do the estimates for carryovers in late February or early March, and carryovers are things that are budgeted in the current year that we know we won't complete. A road project may, the contract may be awarded and started, but it's going to take nine months to finish. We need to carry over the part of the budget that's going to be paid out in the next year. So, because we do those early, we often estimate those carryovers high, because we don't want to start the new year off behind, because we didn't budget enough. And council, you do approve carryovers as part of the budget process, so we come to you and you say, these are the carryovers we're asking you to approve. So, we have a list of those in the budget document, in a document, something that's called Schedule 10. Most carryover reductions or adjustments are reductions in the budget, but for us to technically implement it, we have to move it across what are called lines of appropriation in terms of the state law and adopting the budget. So, even to reduce a department's budget, we have to move that appropriation someplace else into kind of our appropriation contingency area. So, just to real quickly walk you through kind of the math of how we do these carryovers. Essentially, in this example, in the FY '17 budget, there was a carryover of $965,000 for the Parks Asset Management Program. Or, there was a budget of that in '16. In May, in February, we estimated we'd need that to carry over $825,000 to the next-year budget, so into '17's budget, which is in that middle section. So, original project was 965 in '16, we thought 825 of it might fall into the next year. What we do when we do the reconciliation is we go back and we say, what, that $965,000 was the original budget, they actually spent $393,631, so they really only had $571,369 to carry over. So, we take that 825,000 and we reduce it down to that 571. So, we did a, you approved a budget transfer reduction of $253,631 in November because of this reconciliation. And so, at the bottom, it just shows you, the new revised budget in '17 was at 571, the prior-year actuals were the 363, so we've restored the project's budgets to its original $965,000. So, that's what a carryover reconciliation is about. What was the original budget? What did we actually spend? Let's get the new-year budget corrected, so the project retains its original budget. And just to, so the carryover reconciliations that you approved in November, the largest one was 2.3 million reduction in the PD Operations Building. The smallest one was a $3,200 reduction in the roadway to Sonoran Study. There were 12 projects that had their budgets adjusted downward in one or more funds. Moving on to the concept of the consistency with other resolutions and policies, there's several areas where we have established a $75,000 tolerance level. Those include the resolution that authorizes the city manager to make unbudgeted expenditures that are in the best interest of the city up to $75,000. That's another one, it doesn't address the related budget transfer that would be required. The financial policies that you adopted in June establish that $75,000 is the level at which you want to be certain to see capital project budget transfers. Ones lower than that come to you currently if they cross lines of appropriation, but even if something could be done legally within state law at above $75,000 in capital projects, they still come to you because of this policy. And then there are the two resolutions I mentioned earlier, where the police and fire departments are allowed to make certain grants. That also has a $75,000 limit, and it also requires that there not be a new matching expense required for the city. So, as we move into the recommendation, in conjunction with adopting this proposed budget transfer policy, we're also recommending changes to the budget, to the financial policies, so that we aren't in a situation where we have multiple documents addressing the same topic. And so, in the financial policies, there's a budget amendment policy that says, it's essentially repeats the state law, which this resolution also, that, of the budget transfer policy restates the state law as well. So, that information is all addressed in the new budget transfer policy. And then Policy 12C is that item that says that if it's a capital change of $75,000 or more, you want to see that budget transfer. So, we're incorporating that into this recommended policy, so we're recommending removing that from the financial policies as well. The meat of the budget transfer policy, or the details of the budget transfer policy, are that several things, what we're saying, asking the council do, is to essentially pre-approve budget transfers up, not exceeding $75,000, for grants not requiring a city match, for unbudgeted new provider-restricted donations or contributions, for capital projects excluding carryover-related adjustments, and we'll address that one next. And then for unbudgeted carryovers, that would, again, bring that project to its prior-year total. So, that's a little bit different in that those are the unbudgeted ones, such as those first three I showed you, that were all very small. Again, they would be, had been budgeted in the prior year, we just didn't anticipate they would carry over. So, all of those are at $75,000 or less. In terms of the carryovers, the budgeted carryovers, we're requesting that the council approve all, pre-approve all budget transfers to get those projects reconciled back to the proper dollar amount. And that would be done in multiple steps. For the ones with the largest risk, where the carryovers were high, the budget office would adjust those right after we have 12-month actuals, and then we would go back later on and do all of the carryovers again, but in order to minimize risk, we would kind of take a double pass at those. And by way of example, I think last year, you were approving the carryover adjustments in November. And then, the council will continue to approve all budget transfers that involve contingency appropriations. And just a couple examples of things that you have either approved already, or that you might approve after this item, that would fall outside the budget transfer policy. So, in other words, these are the types of things that would continue to come to you for approval. If you remember, last year, there was a price increase in the ballpark, and we ended up needing those resources for items associated with security and some, Major League Baseball security requirements and another item. Those individual items were potentially less than $75,000, but this wasn't a new resource, it was just an increase in existing revenue, so we'd not consider it to be a new resource. So, those would have come to you. You're about to see an item where we're going to be proposing using the wastewater fund balance for an item. The wastewater fund balance is not a new resource, so it wouldn't fall under that new resource portion of the policy. There was a technical correction to move stormwater. We put a supplemental in the wrong department, it was in engineering, it was originally in engineering, but management moved the program to public works. That crosses lines of appropriation, because those two departments are appropriated separately, and it was more than $75,000, so that would have had, still come to you under the policy. There was a project where we were switching around some large CIP projects in water to address an unexpected leak. The dollar amount was higher than 75. It came to you then, it would still come to you under the current policy. And then, there were a number of adjustments associated with the police operations facility. Some of those individual transactions were less than $75,000, but in cumulative total, they were more than a $75,000 adjustment to that project, and one of them also used the city manager contingency. So, that, where we're limiting the CIP change, budget transfers to $75,000, it does say a cumulative total, so if there was a $50,000 change next month, and in three months now, another $50,000 change came, under this new policy, that second transfer of $50,000 would come to you, because now there was a cumulative change of more than $75,000 on the project. So, with that, I'd ask that you approve the budget transfer policy in Resolution 17-1814, which also includes those changes to the financial policies. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolutions 17-1814 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 17-1814, adopting and approving the budget transfer policy by the City of Goodyear, adopting financial policy revisions.
Thank you. Could I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I said second.
Their motion is second, so open for council discussion. Wally?
Lori, you don't have to go back to the slide, because I think you can just verbally tell me, but one of the carryovers you said, we, it was a $10,000 carryover for the Goodyear Wellness Park from November, and you carried it over. Was that in addition to the $75,000 that we had allocated, or was that part of the $75,000?
Mayor, council member, that, in that particular year, the total budget was $75,000. $65,000 got carried over, because there was an anticipation that $10,000 would have been spent, but in the end, the $10,000 also didn't get spent, so we were essentially bringing that $10,000 up, we're bringing it back to the 75 original. So, it wasn't the additional, it didn't increase the original 75, it was making the 75 whole.
Okay, because I thought in the discussion of the community park, the amount of $80,000 was thrown out for something, and I didn't know if the, where that came from, when you're just saying it's 75.
To the best of my knowledge, it was a $50,000 city contribution and $25,000 GE grant. I'm not sure what that 80,000...
$75,000 didn't come out of our general fund?
$50,000 of the, came out of the city's general fund in a transaction that you approved.
Okay.
And then there was a $25,000 grant.
Yeah, just for clarification.
Okay. Yeah, Nathan wanted to address it.
The 80,000 reference was just an approximate number that I used in, during the presentation.
Yeah, but, but the city budgeted $75,000.
$75,000 for the plan, correct?
Bent that now.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm calling you by your first name, Senator LaFerrari.
Okay. Okay, I have a question, because I have read this like five times, and I cannot get my mind wrapped around it. In, in new budget transfer policies, it says unbudgeted carryovers bringing to prior-year revised budget less prior-year actuals. revised budget less prior year actuals. Please give me some kind of example, because I'm just...
That, that's what that, that problem I walked you through was.
Is that what that was?
Yes. You start with a budget, we adjust it for the prior year, you, you adjust it for the prior year actuals.
Now that I have a visual, I wasn't putting those two together at all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brandon? Sherry?
No.
Bill?
Lori, can you go, we need to go back.
Yep. How far?
I don't know, go slow. This one. So, transfers within the proposed policy, which means that we will still see these? No, these are, we will not see this again?
Correct.
Okay, so, we had a $2.3 million reduction in the PD Operations Building, which we will not see anymore. But that particular discussion prompted a great deal, or that particular action prompted a great deal of discussion regarding the PD Operations Building, which resulted in the add-back of several other projects, if I'm, if I've got my timeline correct.
Mayor, council member, the timeline isn't quite correct. That was before we determined that, that was the original, just adjusting the project budget to what it originally was. It was before we identified and were, became aware that the project had funding problems. So that's why the other slide showed that when we found those funding problems or the cost overruns, those came to you because they were CIP changes of 75,000 or more. This just kept the project at its original budget.
Okay, so if, I guess I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we're not giving away our ability to identify potential problems for CIP projects or, you know, something, something along that line. If, if, my point of view is, we're the, we're the check and balance to the, you know, what staff is doing. And if we give away more of that responsibility, there's less checking of what's happening. So how, am I just misreading that? Because I'm, I'm okay if, if, if I messed up.
Mayor, council member, I, I would say in this case, although it's purely a technical correction to get these projects where you already approved the carryover to the correct dollar amount so that we don't, in most cases, have the risk of overspending. And so if, if a project's budget was 100,000 and we carried over 50, and we spent 75 instead of the 50 we thought we would, we're just going to reduce that project by $25,000. So most of these items are reductions, and I don't think, I mean, there, you have approved every carryover adjustment that I've brought to you since I've been here, and I don't believe this has anything to do with decisions about funding projects in the long run or, we, we go through a year-end process and we identify what spending is, but the carryover amount is a pure estimate done four months earlier, and it's not indicative of actual performance on the project.
Okay, so it sounds like I'm confusing the, the idea of carryover versus project budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, you can say it.
Using your words, yes.
So then to restate my concern that I think you said we resolved is, if we approve a budget for a project of $10 million, and that project now is going to exceed the 10 million, however it, however much it's going to exceed is going to come back to us for approval.
Under this, the item in the policy, I changed the slide on you. Your current policy, the current financial policy says that you want to approve CIP changes of greater than 75,000. So the proposed policy we're asking you to approve maintains that 75,000. So if that $10 million project went up by $50,000, we would not bring a budget transfer to you unless for some reason we had to use an unusual funding source that, you know, that required your approval of the funding source. If that change was $100,000, you would see that budget transfer.
Okay. And then, just for further clarification, so then the, never mind, I just answered my own question before I got out there. Okay, so the second, second question that I have, speaking on that checks and balances thing, is, I understand we're matching the 75,000 to the manager's authority, which makes complete sense. And there was a point in time where, when we looked at the information we were provided six weeks or so ago about various managers' authorities throughout the valley, we're kind of in the middle of that, of that whole thing, and I started to, in my mind, question where we were, where that was going. But at the end of the day, my ultimate concern is, and I think we've addressed it, so help me, tell me if we have or not, we have contingency budgets throughout, peppered throughout the, the budget itself. The largest of which, besides the rainy day fund, is the manager's half a million dollars. If money is being spent from that, from that manager's contingency, do we approve all of it? Or have we just written basically a blank check for a half a million dollars that can be spent at $74,999 each time?
Mayor, council member, also in the budget transfer policy, it says council will approve budget transfers for contingency appropriations. So that would address the city manager's contingency, the rainy day fund, the FMLA retirees. So there are a couple of different contingencies. In fact, we're going to change the monthly financial report and add information on the contingencies on a regular basis. The one exception is, you could come upon a case, when we're going to come to you, with approving a budget transfer associated with the city manager's contingency, where it was less than $75,000, and the city manager has already, through his authority, spent that money, but we're still going to come back to you after the fact and say, we had to spend 75,000, you know, $50,000 for storm damage. It had to be done at the time, but here is the budget transfer to ultimately have you approve that.
Yeah, but, so we'll see it.
Yes, sir.
And I think that was my, my biggest concern, is that we didn't write a blank check for a half a million dollars. But whether it's after the fact or, or before the fact is kind of irrelevant because it's obviously within the manager's purview. So I think that answers my concern. Thank you very much for entertaining my questions.
Councilor, or Joe?
Just, just one question. Hypothetical, we, you have a budget you put together for carryovers of 10 million. When you finally go down and you detail each one of the projects, you only need five. So there's five of an appropriation left. Where does that get locked down so that somebody doesn't try to slip in and tap that? Because it's an appropriation, right? It's been budgeted. So how is that locked down so, that you lock it down so nobody has any access to that money?
Mayor, council member, you may or may not recall, in the budget, there is something called, that we have called the CIP contingency, or not the CIP, we've called it the CIP appropriation, or we've called it the Potential Improvement District. It's essentially the place where we have created appropriation should resources become available or should some project come forward that's being funded by others that we need appropriation for. So we basically, when we reduce those carryovers, that's where we put those appropriations so that nobody can touch them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All done? All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano.
Aye.
Councilmember Stip.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo.
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, let's go to the next item, 7.5, to consider approving the budget transfers for FY18, and we have, Lori, Lori, go ahead, Wiganrough, yes.
All right, I don't have a presentation. It's just that this budget transfer is an unusual item, so we didn't just put it on consent. It's a large dollar amount and it's an unusual item. We identified a, as development is occurring, we're starting to really pay much, you know, as you know, we're paying attention to development agreements, and we've identified a place in a development agreement where there is a required payment out of an impact fee fund that we eliminated when we went through the 14 impact fee process. So we're recommending that we use the wastewater fund balance to pay that obligation.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards? Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then could I have a motion, a second, to approve the budget transfers for FY18? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're at 7.7. The last item, designating an acting mayor. I will be out of town this week, as well as Vice Mayor Campo, so we also need an acting mayor from July 18 through the 23rd of July. Yeah, okay. I'm going to ask, are there any speaker cards? I guess that's what...
No, Mayor.
Yes, okay. So I need a motion and a second to authorize council, a council member, and we have to name one, to serve as the acting mayor in the absence, absence of the mayor and vice mayor from July 18, 2017 through the July 23, 2017, and from August 10, 2017 through August 18, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
Joanne, are you here?
I'm, I'm gone.
Wait, can I, can I get a motion for us?
I made the motion.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, I heard Molly make a motion. Who seconded it?
Second.
Okay, Brandon seconded it, so open for council discussion. Now you can discuss it.
Sorry.
Are you here, Joanne?
I'm gone in August, but July, I didn't know about July.
I thought this only said August.
I am here for both of them.
You're here for both. Okay, Joe's for both of them.
Sherry, are you here for both?
I'm going to be gone on one of the weekends.
Okay, then, Mayor?
Yes.
May I move that Councilmember Joe Pizzillo be acting mayor while the mayor and the vice mayor are absent?
For both sets of dates.
For both dates.
Yeah, oh, so, I'm going to speak on this in a minute. It's a real problem for now, since 2011, I have taken very few days off. And I don't want it that way this year. I'm trying to have a year that I actually have some time off. So it's hard for me to have planned way ahead for everything because it's so spontaneous with what's going on in the city. So every time we have to come back and go through this process, it's really a pain. So, you know, we, we've kind of trapped the mayor and future mayors in having to do this. So I know we brought it to vote at one time, and it got voted against. Can I speak that, or am I not supposed to talk now on that?
And we have a motion?
Yes, we did draft a policy at one point to address these unforeseen circumstances when the mayor and vice mayor are out of town, and the policy stated that the next most senior councilman would serve as the acting mayor until the council met again. And I think, I know I wasn't here for that meeting, so I think maybe something got lost in translation on that policy, that it was only in effect until the next council meeting. So if that's something the council would like to revisit, we could certainly bring that policy back.
I can tell you, it's what the mayor would like to, if I could get your cooperation on this one, and, and for future mayors, because it just doesn't work that way with who's in town and who can do it and not do it. So, I mean, I agree that the person that's senior should certainly have that ability to volunteer to do that, but then if they're not...
It just goes to the next round.
It just goes to the next one, so, okay.
And that's how we ended up with it.
All right, okay, so we've designated Joe. You did that when...
I'll be here, and I'll second it.
Okay, so, all right, do I have to do another motion to make sure his name in it? Who did the motion? I'm sorry.
I did, I moved.
Okay, will you move, Joe?
Yeah, I, I moved that Councilmember Joe Pizzillo be acting mayor in July and August when the mayor and the vice mayor are out of town.
Second.
The second was from Brandon. Is that all right? Looking at me. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, thank you. That's just great, okay? So now we're at the bottom. Does counsel have any comments or commendation reports on current events?
Oh, um...
Joe?
Is this where I asked the manager for some...
No, I'll come out, I'll pick out the bills. And this is where you're going to talk about yourself, all the great things you've done. Okay, all right. So does the manager have anything to report?
No, Mayor.
All right, does, are there any staff summary? Probably not. Does the council have any inquiries to staff? Joe?
Brian, we had this discussion before, and you may have made already in progress doing some of it, but one of my concerns is, I know the ballpark has a certain percentage of the ticket that goes for replacement, okay? And then there's other things with the ballpark that's not covered under that. What I'm looking for is, over in the next 10 years, would somebody take a look at the part that's being covered by the ticket to see if there's going to be any shortfall of things not being able to be covered with that money at the 10 years? And then the items that, within the next 10 years, that aren't included in that ticket price, what those items may be? And the reason why I ask is, at some point in 10 years, it's a magic date when something happens. And it would be nice, I think, for future councils, or even this council, to have a general idea what that amount of money may need that's not covered by those, by those prices, and to put a plan in place on how we're going to address it so that when the 10 years comes up, or in that period, we're fighting over where the money's going to come from. Because we have a replacement for everything, partially on the ticket price, but not the things, and I don't know, maybe all of it's included in that ticket price, but my gut tells me it's not in the replacement of items.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, you're correct. We set aside the premium ticket portion to go toward the life cycle replacements, and we actually developed a plan with the teams back in the inception. So that looked out 10 years, or perhaps longer in some areas. It will not be enough, and you're absolutely on point. What will we do when we get to that point? We, we felt strongly we needed to start building a base, and that 250,000 a year kept adding up until you start now, using some of those dollars for replacements. It was a good place to start, but we know that there will be more needed down the road. So we'll look at that. We'll, we'll see what items may not be reflected in there. And then some of the life cycle items have changed. They've lasted longer, some haven't lasted as long, but we'll look at it.
It would be just nice, Brian, to get a general idea how far off we are. I mean, are we looking at half a million, or are we looking at several million at that time? That's shortfall because we haven't addressed that funding. I mean, we've got funding for about everything else, but to me, that's one area that, we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get any major surprises when that happens, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody have a future gen item? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Sherry, I'm sorry.
I don't think this is a future gen item. I think it's more of a question for the city manager. When we talk about the elections, I know we have that on our August, but are we also going to have a conversation, because there's been conversations about whether we move our election again, that's come up again? And if we have that conversation, you're nodding, so I guess that's part of the coming before us?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Loretano. It, it will be a couple of items within that presentation. It'll include the over-under votes. It'll also look at where we align our vote per se, which would require change of charter, but, you know, we'll go through some of those, all the factors associated with when we vote, and then also how we count votes.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's all together so we don't do this piecemeal. And when we do that, can we get, I think Avondale did move theirs a couple of years ago. Can we see if it's made any differ, I mean, are there, is there data we can get from at least Avondale that's kind of a close one, to see if it changes anything?
I see our city clerk nodding yes, so yes.
That was my question.
Wally?
Mr. City Manager, do you have a storm update for us?
I've been getting reports all day, and, and we will be pulling those together. Our, our hope is, is to get that in the weekly managers' report out Friday. But we've gotten reports from Parks and Recreation, from police, from the crews out in the fields. So we are pulling that together, but yes, it's, it's not consolidated at this point.
Okay, and I'm assuming that when we see a tree down, do we email you, or are we just assuming that parks or PD has reported that we have trees down?
So we have gotten the reports from police, from, from the Public Works crews that are out there cleaning up from parks, so we do have information on fallen trees and where we've done some repairs. But you, we won't be in real specific areas, but we'll talk about the areas that were hit, where it was cleaned up and any other damages. So that will be in the report.
Was there any damage in Mobile that you knew of?
We know that there were road closures on 238. Don't know where those are at. Don't know where those are at. That was being looked at this afternoon, trying to get more reports. But they had some wash flooding through there that did cause some road, road closures.
Have a lot of flooding because of the.
Right.
The way the road is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next meeting will be a work session, a regular meeting, on August 21, 2017. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then I'm going to start a special meeting. So this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the special meeting, Monday, July 17. We are all here. I would like a motion to go into executive session.